Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 19th, 2013 Gostown Board of Selectment meeting. Sorry, we're getting started a little bit late. We had a non-public session prior to this, so we'll get started right now. We'll start with a pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I entertain a motion relative to the non-public session we just concluded.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the police chief to start the process that we presented to us.
About the hiring process?
Hiring process.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Another motion, Mr. Chairman. Another motion having the Public Works Director, Carl Querom, move forward with the hiring process for DPW.
As recommended.
As recommended.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
And these are hirings to fill vacancies.
Yes, thank you. Okay, next we have the minutes of the August 12th, 2013. It's in your packet. Are there any corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve with corrections.
Thank you. Motion by Phil is second by Mark. Yes, Phil? What do you have to correct?
Page seventeen, the bottom paragraph, second sentence. The first word says free form. That should be precast.
Precast, not free form?
Right, precast.
Okay.
And the last sentence in that paragraph, we should just strike it.
Okay.
And the only question that I have, it's not an issue to me, but it's just a format question to the board. The second sentence is the way the second sentence in that paragraph starts, if that's acceptable to the board, we'll leave it. If not...
I'm sorry, for which sentence now?
Second sentence in that bottom paragraph starts with the word "the."
Should it just say "Selectmen de Vanzo?" In the spending project?
Usually that's the way the format is, and this is the first time we've had that.
Okay.
I mean, it's not an issue to me.
Yeah.
It's just a format, that's all.
Yep.
Of course, there's five that it could be referred to.
Okay, so we'll just put, instead of "Selectmen," "Selectmen de Vanzo."
Yeah. Anybody else?
Nope, that's all I have.
Anybody else with corrections? No? Alan, anything? No, nothing? I think a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting your minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. I do not have any announcements for tonight. Have their members of the board who have announcements they'd like to share with the public? None? Thank you. It is six ten, so I will ask if there's any members of the public who would like to comment at this time. Seeing none in the room, I assume that's the case, so we'll move along to item number five, which is Public Works Director Carl Querom. Evening.
I have two issues bring before the board this evening. First, we opened bids a while back on the culvert behind the county property. This is a historic culvert that exists behind the, what's called the Piggory Building. It passes two seasonal streams across through the rail bed into the lower field of the county. We discovered back a year or two ago that there was some failure in the granite culvert. We've completed last year, the board voted to put this on as a special article and take the money out of fund balance, so there wouldn't be no tax burden. However, we have put the project out to bid, and we only received one bid. This is a bit of a specialty sort of work, so we only got one bid. The sticky wicket I'm in is it exceeds the special article amount of $120,000. To do the box culvert repair itself is $99,509, but to build the access roads down in there on either end of the job is $35,000. I did kind of take a look at it, if we were to do the work, the access road work ourselves to get it in there, but it was, you know, $20,000 to $25,000 for us to do it. You know, the materials involved, the gravels, and there's also some very steep slopes involved, and I just think we're putting ourselves into a tight spot if we try to provide access roads for a contractor and then something happens and the concrete trucks can't get down in there. I think we're opening ourselves up to potential extras. So I kind of like the plan of having the contractor that's going to do the work responsible for getting the equipment access and doing the work. So I'm recommending that we award the job to Culver Rehabilitation Services. They're very familiar with the project. They came and helped us with the design, you know, back when we first discovered the problem. They've kind of helped us figure out the best way to fix it. And when we put it out to bid, they, in fact, were the only ones that actually bid on the I guess the challenge is, and I think I know the answer, but I'm assuming we can't exceed the special article for the hundred...
You can.
We can?
You can, as long as you have money in your budget to do so.
Well, and that, so...
You can't use the money from a special article for another purpose.
That's what I assume.
It's the reverse, yeah.
Yeah. So I would probably have to take the balance out of the drainage line to, you know, to come up with the extra $14,000 or $15,000 to do this.
Carl, does the work include the removal of the access roads when completion of the job? Are they going to remain?
They're basically going to remain. They're...it'll be behind a fence, you know, the one on the 114 side will be, the fence will be put back in, but it'll provide access to get down in there and clean debris and...
But that'll be a controlled access? I mean, people won't be able to get down in there, don't get access from the rail trail?
No.
Didn't the county agreement require restoration?
Yeah, but they, I don't think they expect us to remove the gravel. I think worst case, the road down from 114 side is actually an old farm road that we're cutting the trees out of and beefing up with fabric and gravel. And as I said, that's controlled access with a gate we're going to have over with a fence. So that fence would just be put back in place. In the backside, there's a gravel road now that goes out to the old lagoons that used to be down in back. That road exists, so the only thing we have to do is extend from the lagoons over to the end of the culvert. I want to say it's only like a couple hundred feet, if that. Worst-case scenario, we would put a little loam over it at the end of the job and seat it, but I don't think...
So we have to upgrade that road to bring equipment? That's a pretty nasty road down there.
It's going to have to be splooshed up a bit, yeah, but it was always, you know, it was there for truck traffic originally, so, to get to the lagoons.
Alan? Can we save any money by letting these guys that are being awarded the contract, are they going to buy their own materials? Are they going to take materials from us, or? We've got a lot of three- or four-inch minus we made right down the gravel in the pit.
Well, we didn't have that conversation with them.
I mean, we've got materials as close by.
Yeah.
They could save a ton of money by just coming right to your pit and taking it out and then using our materials.
Yeah.
We've got it anyway. We've already bought it and paid for it.
Yeah, yeah.
That would certainly bring the line down, I'm sure.
Well, and I'd be happy to explore that with them. Again, I'd want them to assess it to make sure it met their...
But they could use our materials to make the roads. I'm getting it, probably shave a lot of money off that deal right there.
Yeah.
If they could do that, you could get under your line.
Yeah, I think, Carl, you're just concerned that it meets the specs according to this company who's going to assume the liability of building a road.
Yeah, I don't want to do anything that would affect cement trucks that get to that job and they try to ding it.
No, no, let them build the road, but I'm getting it, let them use our materials. I mean, our materials should certainly make that spec to make it work.
Yeah, yeah.
And if they don't, then we've got other issues.
Yeah, they, again, I could invite them to look at it. I'm certainly happy to explore it.
I think that'd be a good idea, and they could certainly save a lot of, and I wouldn't think they would have an issue with saving time and money going. They've got a timeframe they want to get done on if they can come from your place rather than go 15 miles away to get materials.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're going to give them the materials, they certainly can take the bottom line.
Yeah, that makes sense. We could look into that, Carl.
And we've got the materials, so why not let them take it from our pit and use it? That was part of the reason we bought most of it, somehow we've got it there.
Anybody else have questions for Carl?
Good idea on that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. To look into that, Carl.
So we make a motion to approve it at the 120 and then have Carl come back to us after if they want?
Well, the first step, you know, they're getting fabric, $35,000 on only gravel. I mean, that's their time and equipment and trees to remove.
No, no, I understand that, but there's certainly a line they can see. That's quite a bit of road you're going to build on one piece there.
Right, right. And I know they want to get started. They're looking at a September timeframe, so getting bonds in place and a lot of stuff.
The question is, how do we form the motion? And what should the motion look like?
Yeah.
Right, because I don't want to just say yes, okay, and then, you know, oh, well, we tried, and they don't want to do it.
What you do is you make a motion to approve it for the amount of money that was in the article, and then subject to Carl coming back with the difference.
Okay.
Yeah, and explain how we arrived at that, to take into account.
Negotiating.
Because if we were going to build, if we, the point, the point is, is if we were going to build the roads, where would the four-inch minus be coming from? We would be supplying it.
Right.
So if you just explain to the vendor that the amount really actually exceeds the article amount...
Well, and I guess I can tell you, when we put it together, there was, if I remember right, our quantity, our gravel cost was about $18,000, so...
Well, there you go.
Well, it depends on where he was bringing it from, so it might wind up being 25, 24.
Did he give you an estimated?
No, it was a lump sum.
Oh, a lump sum. Just asking for an itemization of his bid, then you'll know how much he was planning on...
He must have, how much road are we building? I mean, just...
Well, it's, like I said, in the backside, I want to say it was only a couple hundred feet, but on the front side, it's all the way from 114 down into the thing to the moment that called...
Eight hundred feet, 1,000 feet?
Oh, it's not, yeah, probably six or 800.
So you've got 1,000 feet total road?
Yeah.
And they're going to access it, so that's, you know, that's certainly considerable savings that they use our gravel, and they're right on top of it. They can go bang, bang.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
All right, so entertain a motion for the 120 with the DPW director to come back with an itemization for any additional, after taking into consideration using town materials.
Should the motion be for the 134, up to 134, but to negotiate or find out how much?
No, we do that...
I think that's...
No, it'll give Carl a little bit more bargaining power if the only thing that's been approved is the 120.
120.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Does everybody understand the motion?
Yep.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Thank you, Carl.
Okay. The other item is, we tomorrow have our public information meeting on Addison Road. I believe we left a set of plans for Addison Road in the selectmen's room. I'm sure you're all painfully familiar with Addison Road. We have very narrow right-of-way, limited site distances around the curve there at the bottom, a couple of roads that come out, not the most ideal location. We've worked with the residents to try to improve site distances best we can in those spots. However, as is typical with these projects, we certainly are not meeting today's road design standards, so I'm in just to answer any questions you have about the project, but also for the board to get the motion in that we're going to build the road as close to standard as we can within the limitations of our right-of-way and geometry and as per our design.
Do you have a question? Yes.
Carl, on the bridge on the old portion of Addison, just before the curve?
You talking about the culvert?
No, the bridge over Mystic Brook.
Addison, yeah, okay.
Old portion?
It's technically culvert, but...
Well, it looks like a bridge when you go over it.
Yeah.
The granite curbing stuff that's along the way, it's the angle of the road, the way it's tweaked and you come out, there's that one section of curbing that apparently gets hit by the plows quite a bit. You familiar with the one I'm talking about? Well, there's a section of granite that's been missing, because a couple of the residents have mentioned that to me, and when I talked to, it might have been my old house in the past, you know, they were aware of it and they were going to address that when this, you know, project got, portion of the project got done.
Is this the granite arch that's washed out in the floods next to Whining Brook? Is that what you're talking about?
No, it's, it's, it's right at the bridge. It's a piece of curbing that's, I don't think it's from that. It's been a couple of years. It's been a couple of years that... My, I guess my question was, that's what, I always thought that it got bumped, but I know the angle of that bridge because of the line with the road.
Yeah.
And I know we're not doing that culvert, but I didn't know if, because you were talking about the narrow right-of-way, is, if that culvert gets replaced in the future, can it be, or the road bed be tweaked a little bit for a little better alignment with the road and that? Would you guys already account for that? I didn't know. I couldn't tell by the plans.
I guess what I'm confused about is, I thought Mystic Brook was the one that crossed right by Whining Brook.
Yeah, the lower one.
Culvert.
Okay, but there's granite curbing there.
Okay, there won't be when we're done.
Oh, okay, 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 so you're addressing the issue.
Yeah. Yeah, so what we're going to do there is, like we did on Shirley Hill Road, and that old granite box is stable now.
Right.
So we're going to pour a slab over the top of it and bridge it with a concrete slab, so we just take the load off it and stop allowing the fines to work through, so that's our plan there, just to kind of leave it alone and cap it, and that's worked out pretty well.
I just had a quick question, Carl. You're talking about pouring over the top of that. Have we looked into maybe doing a precast on that? I mean, late night loading?
Yeah, you can't, if you go anywhere near those stone culverts, it is a nightmare.
No, no, I understand, I'm talking, you're going to cap it anyway.
Right.
So you haven't looked at maybe taking a precast, putting it over the top, so instead of doing it one day event, bang, it's down?
Oh, instead, you're like a precast slab instead of pouring it?
Yeah, maybe two, three pieces that you're going to set, not all at once, obviously, but maybe four, five feet wide.
You know, we haven't, but I'd look at it. I would welcome a quick, you know...
Take a peek at that with somebody like Mitchy or any of these other precast companies, and that would be, they could bring it down in one shot and go boom.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
You know, it could save yourself a lot of aggravation, having to close the road or whatever, it could just be a day thing or an event, shim it up and lay it down.
Yeah, I actually like that idea, so we'll definitely look at that.
Phil?
Yeah, Carl, since you mentioned talking about the slab over the top, and you might be familiar with this, but I was over at UNH a month and a half ago, and in the engineering department, they had a big, big precast section that they were putting together for a bridge. I forgot what town it was.
Yeah.
But I was looking at it, and they were explaining to me, and it's held together with rod, big threaded rods and nuts on the inside of it.
Pull them all together.
Yeah, well, this was, yeah, but this was something that they were developing, and they had over to go there, and I don't, I don't know if something along that line, because it, but it was really impressive.
There's a couple offices that, one in Nashua does that, and then Mitchy does it also, they, you know, these are big T-logs, and it's pretty rugged.
Oh, yeah, it's impressive, it's impressive.
Well, our Parker Road Bridge is actually that.
Yeah.
Construction. But the way, I think you're talking about the accelerated bridge deck.
Yes, that's what it was.
Yeah, I'll look at it. I'm not sure we have to go that aggressive, but...
Oh, I didn't know, but it was just a thought, if maybe not on that, on some of the others, because we have quite a few crossings.
Yeah, yeah.
Might save us a lot of time, at least as far as setup and...
Right, yeah.
So Carl, I see there's a public information for this tomorrow night?
Yes, yes.
5:30, that's been advertised, and...
It has.
Well, I'll be here to make sure the doors are open, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Selectmen.
You're welcome.
I think the residents are very anxious for us to get out there.
I'll bet. How many years is it now?
Been a long time.
Well, you know, when you start at the upper portion, you're teasing them all.
Yeah, we started in the middle.
You started in the middle, didn't you?
We did.
Now, will this complete it, or is it, no, this is phase two, and then you still have phase three to do?
This includes the part by Zoffey's Farm?
Goes from Longbrook out to Shirley.
Any other questions for Carl?
No.
Thank you, Carl.
A motion on the design, if you have any minute.
To approve the design as close to standard as you can get.
Within the limitations as outlined on the plan.
Yes.
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
Alan, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Everybody understand the motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries five zero zero. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Representative Heike, we had the six-ten public comment session. Were you here for that, or are you sticking around for the seven-twenty?
I was late.
Okay, well, why don't you come forward? We'll adjust our schedule to accommodate you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
My name is John Heike, 483 Mass Road. Just a quick one, if, I got five here, one for each. I was walking to tie a warehouse from my repair shop, and I came walking towards someone crossing that bridge, and I chose to step out into the road to leave them so they could walk on the sidewalk. I just thought you might like to see that, and if there's a way to trim it back to make Pernodville a more walkable space, that would be a real good start.
You know what this vegetation is?
Yeah.
No, I don't.
It's not weed.
Is it really?
It's very aggressive, it's invasive, and very, very aggressive.
Okay.
Round up.
Now, it's, yeah, I just thought I'd, I...
We can certainly cut it, it'd be a real, real short-term solution to this, and it also has to be handled properly and bagged and disposed, so that it doesn't spread.
Really? I didn't know what it was, okay.
Yeah, a lot of times, people just bring this down to the transfer station, of course, then it gets ground up or anything else, and next thing you know, it's getting distributed throughout town, because people are coming to pick up mulch to bring to their yards, and...
Wow.
Yeah, it spreads very, very quickly.
It's amazing.
Yeah, it's nasty, nasty stuff, but certainly it can be trimmed back to make the sidewalk more usable.
At least so we can walk on it, yeah.
And we could speak to Carl about having the town crews do it, because I know they know how to handle knotweed.
Yes.
Properly and dispose it properly, so we'll...
I never knew what it was called, but it's certainly...
Yeah, it's nasty stuff.
It is nasty stuff. Well, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sue, could you...
Sure, can I have a copy?
You don't need to have it, I know where this is.
Just got to talk to Carl about having the crews turn it back. Thank you. All righty, Town Administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your weekly meeting schedule is in your packets. Tomorrow evening is planned Pernodville in this room. Wednesday at six, the library trustees of the library. Wednesday at seven, Parks and Rec Commission, the Parks and Rec Center, and Thursday, planning void in this room.
Do we have those all covered, gentlemen?
At the library, I'm not here.
Not here for the library?
I have Parks and Rec at seven, and I'm willing to go to the, library trustees at six, but I'd only be able to stay for the hour until...
They don't go long anyways, do they?
Unless somebody else can...
Not very long, no, it's not much.
I don't mind doing that.
I appreciate that, Nick, thank you very much.
And you're not a voting member at the library trustees, but you are over at the other place, so...
Right. No, am I? At the other place?
Well, if you don't vote.
I don't think so.
Parks and Rec?
Hmm.
Okay, all the others are covered?
Thank you, Nick.
You're welcome.
Consensus folder tonight, you have manifest, the general fund is $2,057,250.99, and $2 million of that's a school. Payroll withholding is $147,025.28. Your cable revolving fund payroll withholding is $1,200.34. There's no expenditures from special detail this week. Employee status report and promotion, that you already took action on, and this is just a sign the employee status form, and sympathy card to the family of Lorraine Neville.
Has everybody seen the card?
Yeah, I'll second Phil's approval, Phil's motion.
Thank you. Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you. The assessor recommends current-use land use change tax collector's warrant and the land use change tax release form for MAP 9 lots 4-52 and 4-55.
Make a motion to accept.
Motion to accept the assessor's recommendation, with a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you. Fire Chief Rich O'Brien requests board approval of out-of-state travel from September 16th to 19th for apparatus preventive maintenance and service on the command zone system of the town ladder truck.
Just so that you know, he's not going Lieutenant Vogli.
Is that what it said?
Yes.
Yeah, his...
Lieutenant Vogli.
Lieutenant Vogli will be attending, just...
Instead of him?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what he...
He's just requesting it.
Oh, okay.
He's requesting it for Lieutenant Vogli.
And so the meals and overnight accommodations will be responsibility to participant?
Mm-hmm.
Is that because it's possible to drive back and forth? Is that the deal? Why are we not covering?
That's what I'm kind of thinking, I couldn't tell you, but...
Where is it going, Henry?
Centerville, Mass. Centerville, Mass.
Four days.
Where's Centerville?
Is it down the Cape?
I think it's down by the Cape.
It is.
As long as we drive that truck back and forth, just, yeah, I'll, yeah, let's entertain that motion. Let them stay. Be much cheaper buying fuel.
I don't think he's bringing the truck down.
He's not bringing the truck down.
Just himself?
Just himself.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I mean-
He's submitting for-
Oh, okay, command systems, okay, on the ladder truck.
It'd probably take a town vehicle down, I-
He would? Okay.
I would think.
I don't know.
So he's, he's gonna drive down to the Cape and back for four straight days?
No, it's overnight, I believe.
Oh, he's, oh, so he's gonna pay his own overnight?
So it's a four-day course?
Yeah.
According to this, it's a four-day course, so... Is he going for just one day, or?
Meal and overnight accommodation will be the responsibility of the participant.
They're not paid by the department.
If I may, this is September sixteenth. I'll make a motion to approve the course and then if we could ask the chief to come back and give us some more specific information on whether he's staying overnight and-
Yeah, how that's, how the costs are gonna be covered so we can evaluate it.
Yes.
I'll second Nick's motion.
So the motion is for the, cover the cost of the course, a thousand dollars.
But I guess I don't understand what's, what's, what's not clear.
Well, says meals will be, accommodations will be responsibility of the participant. Will not be paid by the department, so-
That's pretty clear to me.
He's a paperless meals, his own.
Didn't we just approve something last week for meals?
That was, that was Bill, that was Bill.
Bill, honestly.
No, I understand.
All included, I believe, in class of his-
Right. So he's willing to pay for his meals and hotel.
Sounds like-
He would take, he would take a town vehicle.
Yes.
For travel.
Or submit for travel.
That's worse case scenario, I'm good with that.
Well, it's still the same motion.
Okay.
To approve the, uh, the course cost.
Okay. Second, second.
Second, yes.
Any other further discussion? Philly, okay? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you. And Dick Gagnon submits his resignation from Cable Access Committee and raises the question in his letter if it's needed anymore now that we have a full-time coordinator.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation with regret.
Second.
Motion and a second. We'll send a letter thanking him for his service. Uh, any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Bruce Futrick submits volunteer application being alternate on the W Board of Appeals and a community representative on ADA.
The motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Just a quick question, just while the ADA committee was brought up. We had talked previously when we were talking about voting that the school is separate and has their own ADA
Yes.
Committee. Is there a reason why-
They don't have a committee. They have a coordinator, ADA coordinator.
Is there a reason why we have a school representative on our-
Because this is like an appeal board, so if they're not happy with the ADA coordinator's decision-
So this is for both school and town?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then you have appeal board is for both.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
I mean, it might be possible, and I don't, I'm not familiar, but is it possible that they could create their own appeal board?
Oh, they could, but there never has been.
But they haven't been.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
That's all?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Adam G.
Adam G, mosquitoes.
We don't want any.
We don't want any. We'll tell them not to come to Gostown. Last year, as you remember, we did do emergency spraying of the ball fields. When you do emergency spraying, you need an emergency permit from the state and the state charges you for that emergency permit and it's a thousand dollars. Last year, we shared that cost amongst every property owner that wanted to participate. So the school system, the town, St. Anne's, Villa, who else participated?
Lions Club.
Lions Club participated. We opened it up. Some participated because they weren't having any activities there, so they didn't feel a need. So, my question to you is, we haven't gotten any positive test results in Gostown or nearby yet, but it's a matter of time. And of course, the timing of this, if you're gonna have some frost, deep frost, it takes a two to three deep frosts to kill the mosquitoes. But if we do get positive test results to get this in motion now, the emergency permit, and I think at the same time, let's just apply for a regular permit for this year. There's no charge for that if we do it at the same time as we apply for the emergency permit.
I, I think there is still time to do a permit without it being an emergency at this point.
Well, we can try, but typically, when you get to August and make the decision, they consider an emergency permit because you want to spray before the end of September.
I see the traps are out.
Yeah.
Traps are out, yeah.
Yeah, so they're testing.
And who is, if I could, who's, who is doing that?
Health and Human Services, I think, right?
The testing? Yes.
Yeah.
They're doing the trapping and the testing. And what's our tar, is it triple E that we're looking for?
West and West Nile.
I know in a lot of places, they, they don't consider West Nile for spraying. It's, like in Manchester, it's triple E before they spray.
Last year, it was for both, wasn't it? Triple E and West Nile.
Yeah, if you ever tested positive, I'd have to look at my notes. I don't remember what tested positive in Gostown.
Wait a minute, if you're spraying for mosquitoes-
Yeah, and what he's saying is you don't respond unless the mosquito's tested positive.
Right, no, I understand, but once you get-
But they carry both, yes.
If you have one-
Yeah, but-
They carry both, yeah.
It's the same, same bug.
I'm sorry, the plan I'm just making is if you have them with both, you can't spray for just one. You're spraying for mosquitoes.
I think he was establishing the threshold.
Same bug carrying both.
Exactly, exactly.
So do you want to establish a threshold if it tests positive for triple E?
No.
I was gonna make a motion to just go forward with the permit.
Yeah.
And then we can worry about the threshold or when that test result comes back, if it comes back. And I would assume that we would just next year, earlier in the year, I don't know if we can make a motion now to bind next year's board to-
We can go forward and apply for a regular permit for next year.
And just renew it?
Sarah from Dragonfly Mosquito, she can do that.
They'll do the permit for us. So I'll include that in the motion for the year and for next year, yeah.
Okay, so the motion is for this year and to apply for the permit for next year.
And the same scope, the fields?
Yes, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I guess, depending on where the testing comes, yes.
If they want, right, if they want to participate. But we can open it up on our permit, so each individual one doesn't have to get an emergency permit.
Sure.
Okay.
Let's fix it before it's broken.
Yep, motion maker and second are okay with all of that?
Yeah.
First time I heard that comment.
Any other further discussions, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Spray the rails and trails last year or did we not spray the rails and trails?
I believe we did, no.
I don't think so.
Would it be something to consider maybe, where there's a significant number of people down there walking?
We can do the parts that are completed.
Yes.
Maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
Doesn't that require, isn't that private property we'd be spraying?
Yeah.
It might, might, might need to be assessed before we do it, so we know. There might be sessions.
I just was, I just was thinking for the safety of the public and-
I think we might want to make the rail trail committee aware of it in case they want to participate next year and they want to formulate where we can do it, where we can't do it, and that sort of stuff, but it might be premature for this year. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Well, we're well ahead of our seven twenty public comments, so we might as well
Go through the rest of this.
Move into the selectmen's discussion.
She was asking if she could record.
Oh, he's out of town. Bill's out of town. He asked me to sit.
Oh, sure, yeah, you can set up.
This is where it usually-
No, usually right there, so he can see it.
Um, if I can, let's take the committee reports, if we can dispense with those before we get into, I'd like the discussion on some new and old business. Do we have a Plan Pernodville committee report? I think this is the only one we're looking for.
We met last week. It was well attended by the people from Pernodville, the people from town, residents from town. There was a motion already made to, um, change, I have one for everybody, to change, um, some of the information from the guiding principles on page twenty. Basically, the motion that was made, it would like to delete paragraph starting with the TPUDC, um, working with the Pernodville residents on page twenty. Replace it with the following paragraph. The process identified a set of enduring guideline principles, principal, critical, yeah, critical to the current and future quality of life in Pernodville. These principles embody the core philosophy and common vision expressed by the community. The conclusion and strategics which this plan endorses is to implement these principles to include the following. There's, there's a list of them, there's several of them. But basically, the short version is, um, they want to make sure that, um, the residents of Pernodville are left alone and we deal with the Economic Development Committee and the, in the business part of the community and to try to, you know, leave the residential neighborhoods where the residential neighborhoods are and not to disturb them and not to rezone them. They were to talk about eminent domain as well. They added that into the, into the plan. So basically, I guess, what I'm looking for from this board is I'm the, I'm the rep of that committee and we're meeting tomorrow night. I guess I'm kind of looking at some guidelines and suggestions, any feedback that you might have, um, so that I can bring back and express to the, to the, to the committee tomorrow night or share some views or some, some comments with the group.
So as I understand it, the motion was made and it was passed by the committee to limit the scope to the commercial industrial portions of Pernodville only and eliminate any consideration of the residential properties.
Correct, Mr. Chair, and that was a unanimous vote. That was, that was, that was, um, everybody was in favor. That, everybody had a yea on that as well.
And that's consistent with what we've heard from the residents who've appeared here and in other places.
Yes, sir.
It's consistent with their wishes.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's good. I'm glad to hear that.
I mean, I think, I think what we were, what we had talked about originally, what the consultant came forward with was I don't know why that was there, but, um, what, what, what was presented to us, I think, was a little bit different than what we had anticipated as, as I, you know, as I kind of see here. We had talked originally about the, um, business section of Pernodville and, and working with that section. And when it came back, it dealt with a whole bunch of other changes and I, I think, maybe a lesson learned when we come around the next time, let's look for somebody a little bit closer and let's look for somebody that speaks our language. You know, so that we, you know, we're all on the same page and, um, we're not, we're not arguing over things. But I, I guess, you know-
And so do you have an idea what the pulse of the commercial and industrial property owners are as far as the motion and the way it would move forward from here?
I haven't heard, it was, it was done and it was, it was taken back and, um, they had to sit, read and discuss. I have a whole, I mean, I have a bunch of paperwork here that was, that I'm still going through and trying to decipher. But, um, they didn't have time to really work on it that night. It was, it was given to them pretty quick, pretty fast and I, I believe it's going to be tomorrow night on the agenda to speak tomorrow night. I know Tony Marx has, has, you know, tried to do a lot of work with the committee to steer them in the right, in the right direction so that it will affect the the industrial part or the, the commercial part of the Pernodville section and not, um, not have as much of a catastrophe, I guess, on, on the residents of the, of the Pernodville section of town. And like, the comment was said, I mean, we're picking on Pernodville again. I don't think we're picking on Pernodville again, but, um, there are east Gostown sections of town, the Gostown Village, I mean, let's, let's look all over and why should these guides and rules be just for Pernodville only? If we're gonna change something, let's change it throughout the entire town, is what, is what I heard the other night as well.
Yes.
I, I also had asked that we discuss this tonight. Remember back in two thousand and eleven when this, the Challenge Grant first came up, the whole idea? It was presented to us as a, a way that we could promote economic development in the industrial areas, assist us in developing the county corridor. But then as it moved along, particularly because it was a HUD grant, I think it morphed into something different than what it was originally presented. That issue aside, this board accepted the grant, not this particular board, but a previous board. We put together the subcommittee, so I think it is part of our responsibility to not sit back as a, as an observer in the process. We have a representative on the, on the board and my hope was that we could go through this plan and make some constructive comments to the committee as to what we see as issues. And off the top, I'll just say, this is, this plan as amended is basically the guiding vision of Pernodville as it goes forward. And there was an amendment to have it limit, limited just to those two corridors, Mass Road, the west side of Daniel Plummer. Yet, a good portion of this plan deals with the St. Anson's Drive area, the residential area, so one of my first comments would be, if this plan is supposed to be limited to just those two corridors, all those other sections need to be removed. Not simply have something on the first page that says it's not gonna affect any of those residential areas. Some of my other concerns, if I may, to me, when I read this plan, this plan is heavily into increasing the density of Pernodville, allowing property owners to develop their property to the fullest potential possible, allow shared parking so that we could have more residential sharing their parking with commercial and retail. I think this board needs to look at, how is this, and this should be in one of the guiding principles, how does this plan affect the economic health of the town in general? Adding a mixed-use project that has retail or commercial, but also has residential, at best is a wash. At worst, is gonna cost. When you look at school costs, city services. Our hope is to develop the potential commercial and retail spaces as commercial and retail spaces to take the load off of the residents. Anytime we do mixed-use or we add more residential, you're diluting that potential. So I think our comments need to be geared in that regard as well as you go through this plan. But my hope was that we could take some time. It's, it's a large document, it's eighty-five pages, but it's actually only forty, somewhat pages when you take out the blank pages and the maps and I, I, I don't think it would take that long to go through.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just have a quick question. I mean, originally, it wasn't supposed to be the corridor of one fourteen and let's say, coming towards this village here. It wasn't supposed to be any of this to be doing with the, with the Pernodville. I mean, that was the way it was represented to start, wasn't it?
Why don't you, why don't we look at the application?
And like you said, it went into a bigger state of trying to get into the whole-
It had geographic boundaries, that's what I did.
Right, so I'm getting at, so we sold the bill of goods and we really didn't get our bill of goods, is what I'm trying to say. I'm wondering if we were kind of put into something different than we want to have.
Well, we certainly got time to do, do just that and-
I mean, I think we should look at this because I've been, I've got phone calls and phone calls and people just are-
My point is we've got between now and seven twenty, so we've got a good half hour
Yep.
To discuss that, certainly willing to do that. I think it's a good use of that time.
I, I mean, I, if we're done with our agenda, I wouldn't mind even, you know, staying a little longer and doing that if, you know, if the meeting is done.
Well, let me just ask, is there any other new or old business that we want to discuss? If, if there's not, then we can just dedicate the remainder to-
It's a new business right here, isn't it?
No, it's an old business, actually.
I have no.
Okay, that, that's fine, then why don't we do that? Let's, let's take the time to do that.
One, can I suggest that we start by looking at the application? Because on the application, there's two sections. I don't have it in front of me, but on the application, there were two-
You've got a copy here.
Yeah, but no, no, on the application, we implied
For the grant, yeah.
There were two sections that had a narrative on them of what we were looking to achieve out of this project.
Saw Pernodville and the narrative. Gostown Village, let's see, one fourteen corridor. Project supports regional goal, found in Southern New Hampshire planning. Would you like, Phil, maybe you might be able to pick it out? This is the-
There's two sections on, on the application.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm wondering if, if most people here may be here for public comment, would it pay to have those comments before we start?
Well, I'm, I'm a little reluctant to because the agenda posted public comment is seven twenty.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't want to have people, sorry, you know, we've been through this before.
Understood.
Let me come back and comment again, so I think better use of our time for us to discuss it as a board and then we'll open it up at seven twenty. In the meantime, those that are here will have an opportunity to hear what it is we're discussing, so it may help them to frame their comments at seven twenty, so everybody's okay with that.
If I remember in two thousand and eleven, when it was that community challenge, when the whole idea came out, I think we we didn't have a specific area at the time. I think the scope narrowed once the application was made available through New Hampshire Housing, if my memory serves me.
I found the section that I'm looking at. Okay, it's this section here. And it says, "This project supports the regional goal, land use gold sea. Smart, smart growth, affordable housing and Appendix F, founded in Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission's Regional Economic Development Plan of seeking balanced growth and development which broadens the local tax base." I mean, there's one of the goals, "broadens the local tax base" "and respects and strengthens quality of life, community character and the environment. Pernodville is an essential part of the greater Manchester region, including the Business District and St. Anson's College, which is used nationally for political events. It is incumbent upon us to ensure the viability of this part of our region." And I'm just pointing out that that, that, that was what-
What was presented.
Right, okay. You know, we're hoping to achieve out of this. And I think the main thing in there is you're talking about the character of Pernodville. And, you know, that's always been an issue as to how do you maintain, uh, the character that everybody's familiar with, why you have change. And that's the whole point, is that there was never any, any planning since the incorporation of zoning in nineteen sixty-one and everything's been haphazard. And this was an attempt to try to do something about that.
Mm-hmm. And I think it's worth pointing out also, this isn't the first time that Gostown as a community's gone through this sort of a process. We did it with the Village Commercial District and the Village so as to relax zoning and allow for greater flexibility, so this is not a foreign process to us. It, it's different, but it's not totally foreign to us.
And I'll add one thing. Two years ago, there was a zoning petition to rezone multiple parcels in Pernodville to commercial. People's properties were on there that didn't even, weren't even aware that their properties were on there. It causes, I mean, people get upset. All of a sudden, you find out, you're reading the paper that your property does a, is gonna be on the, in front of the planning board to go on the ballot to be rezoned and you know nothing about it. And I think that's the type of changes that go on without any type of a plan. And I think part of what we were trying, what you're trying to get out of the plan is to avoid that stuff, so at least that there's a plan someplace so that people can look at a plan and say, gee, you know, this area, what, 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 what can it grow into? So that you don't all of a sudden wake up one day and this whole section has been zoned from something drastic.
Yeah, or you go to the ballot, or you go to the polls and you see a ballot article of rezoning multiple lots and you have no idea what's going on. So, so this is certainly more transparent process, you know, for what it's worth.
Mm-hmm. If I may.
Yes.
And I agree with- And I agree with you. My position, though, is, this board has made it one of our goals to increase economic development, to try to remove the burden, or at least shift some of the burden from the residents. This process was started by this board, so I think it's incumbent on this board to know, because I think planning is good, but I think it's our responsibility to also know what this plan proposes and make comment on it, if it's not going in the direction that we think it should go, to promote the health of the, the economic health of the town.
So in light of the vote that was taken at the last committee meeting to restrict it to the commercial industrial portions of Pinnardville only, there are sections of this that can just be disregarded? Is that, I think that's where you're headed, right? Let's look at the portions of this that deal specifically.
I would think so. I don't know why you would have sections in a plan that aren't going to be.
That aren't supported by the committee.
Because what I would think would happen is, in future years, someone's going to look at this and say, you know, this is the vision, and it has a whole section on, you know, the St. Anselm area or the residential area, we need to start doing some of this stuff.
Right, yeah.
So why would you have a section of, of a plan that you've already said on the first page, isn't going to apply?
So it seems to me, one of our first objectives would be to give some direction to the committee, to say, you know, you need to look at the document and pare it down so it's consistent with the motion that was made.
That's what, that's what they're supposed to be doing, and there's another 30-day window that they're supposed to come back with feedback and come back with any changes they'd like to see or anything like that.
So there's another 30-day comment period specifically to the pared-down.
I believe so, yes.
Version, okay.
Pauls?
Yes.
You know, I'm just glancing this real quick, and everything I see here is talking about Mast Road in Pinnardville and St. Anselm Drive in Pinnardville, and it's not really getting out to the outskirts where we needed to get out to. It's all, it looks like they're mostly centralizing here in Pinnardville, and that's, and I see where it's.
That's because the grant was specific to that.
Yeah, well, you know, but.
Traffic collision.
And maybe that's where it all went wrong. I'm just, you know, having to look at it, it's Pinnardville connector, Pinnardville connector, and it's all.
But the grant was specific to that. I mean, certainly there's opportunities to look at other sections of town, but it would be done under a different process.
Maybe that's, should look at it a little differently, because that's, I don't see that being a really.
Well, we took action on it.
Yeah, no, no.
The grant was specific goals, objectives, and deliverables.
Yeah, we can broaden the scope.
That's right. Certainly narrow.
It's a problem, when you take money from the government, and you always have to live with their rules, and that's, we have to maybe take a look at it this time. Grants are not always a good thing to have. Still my money, still your money.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, the grant was accepted with good intentions, and I still believe there's some good that can come out of this. And I think we've gone a long ways towards refining it. We've heard the people. The committee's acted appropriately. We now have a different product that we're looking at. Much simpler, much more concise, much more consistent with what we've heard of the wishes from the community. And I think, you know, we need to go forward as board and make comment and recommendations based on that new product. So with that in mind, do we have specific?
Well, I.
I'm, Nick, I'll let you take the floor.
Sure, I'll just point out a few. If you could turn to page 46. And this section is the Ice House District, which encompasses the corner of Daniel Plummer Mast Road, the current shopping centers, which, in one sense, is prime commercial property. And on page 46, if you go to number five, "Providing new housing types." The plan incorporates the addition, and this is the second sentence there, "The plan incorporates the addition of new building types, including traditional row houses, live-work units to the housing stock of Pinnardville." I don't know why we'd be, we would be addressing housing in those sections. Again, I think any housing that we add there is diluting that potential shifting of tax burden from the residents.
I would, my comment would be, in general, we need to go through this and search for housing, housing, and every time it appears in here, take a close look at it. Why is it in here? The intention was, this is supposed to address housing, so I think our initial position is, anything that refers to housing needs to come out, unless there's a good reason to keep it in there.
Totally.
So I would agree with you there, Nick. Others?
Other sections, let's see. Page 27. This is the general land use goals.
Page was that next?
Page 27. Okay, so one, two, three, four, five, six bullets down. And these comments are kind of sprinkled throughout, but this is the first place I saw it. "Study the feasibility and justify decreasing the parking requirements and increasing shared parking for multifamily, mixed-use, non-residential properties where appropriate, with the expectation that properties will be able to be used to their maximum extent for development." When you look at some of the actual guidelines in the SMART code, setbacks are reduced, side setbacks are reduced. If you go through Pinnardville, I mean, we talk about preserving the village character. Pinnardville at one time was a village, and most of the homes there are residential, they have front yards, they have separation between buildings. Why do we want to encourage development that reduces those setbacks and brings everything to the front? I understand uniformity, and I think our development regulations can deal with a lot of that, and that's part of what our planning board does when projects come before them, to look at the aesthetics and how it fits into the neighborhood. I'm just concerned that we have a press to, that we're pressing to create a, and I'm not disparaging any community, but a downtown Portsmouth, or a, you know, why do we want to become very urbanized in that area? And I think the commercial area that they're proposing for the intersection of College and Pinnard, excuse me, Mast Road specifically talks about increasing the development there. And I just wrote a big Y. Why are we promoting that? And I'll find the section if I, just have a second.
I had one under land use while Nick looked into that.
Sure.
I mean, second.
What page?
It's page 27. Second bulleted down, "Encourage mixed-use development along Mast Road and in College Road connecting Pinnardville to St. A's College." Again, I mean, we don't, we don't want to, I mean, I don't want to be part of St. A's College. You know, I mean, let them take care of theirs, we'll take care of ours. I mean, it's nice to have their, their, their students come into the, into the Pinnardville area and spend their money and do what they need to do in Pinnardville, but I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to have to roll into the, into, make it all in one as well. I guess I'm trying to hold out.
Can I make a comment on that? Because with the St. A's, one of the unusual things about our current, and I guess, these are the, what I envisioned was addressing certain portions of our current zoning limits. St. Anselm's is one of the, I don't know if it's the only college in the state, but it's a college in the state who does not come under college regulation, basically. St. A's has to come before the Gostown Planning Board and get a.
Permit.
Well, they, they have to get a special use for their dormitory. Their dormitories come under multifamily, but it's on a college campus. Most colleges, their dormitories do not come under the town ordinance, zoning ordinance. There, in other words, to apply, to build a dormitory, they don't go to the town and apply for multifamily, they have to go and apply for, you know, because they're exceeding the capacity, all right? Because it's a dorm, it's, it's, it's a college campus. And I guess what I see in here is trying, this appears to be trying to blend that into what we have, rather than the separation, is what Mark is talking about. So I guess, you know, that there are things that are in our zoning that I hadn't expected, and, you know, I've been trying to stay out of this because as the selectmen's were up on the planning board, this is going to come to the planning board. So I want it to be as objective as I possibly could be when this comes to me without pre-biases. Okay? Because I think that's the best way that I could possibly do my job, to be as objective as it could. As I'm going through this, as, as, as we see, you know, my, what I envisioned was to address, when you talk about to increase the commercial development, you have houses on Mast Road. How do you address residences on Mast Road that are surrounded by commercial properties? That's the kind of thing that I thought that, you know, we might have, there might, the committee would have discussion, and there would be some kind of report as to how to do this, so that we would have a report that when somebody wants to rezone their property from residential to commercial, you could kind of get an area, you know, on it, you have some kind of a direction or something along the way, some type of a plan, rather than haphazard as to where, where it's gone. So the housing is, the amount of housing that's in here, especially on Mast Road, I mean, I have a concern with. As far as the, the shared parking, what the planning board's been trying to deal with is, you know, our ordinance, and here's another case, our ordinance for the town requires that every business that, that develops, they have to have onsite parking. Well, you get to sections, you get to Pinnardville, you really can't have a business come in and have their full onsite parking, so you need shared parking, because they don't allow the parking spaces that are out in the street to be used in the calculation for their parking. So they have to have, so how can one entity share spaces with another one in order to fulfill that, the requirement of what, what they need? I mean, we've had that issue with business coming in over by, over by Shaw's, on the Little Green Mall, the restaurant that's coming, that was over on Kelly Street, that's coming in over there. All right? I mean, we, we waive parking for them, because they're hours of operation and how everything mixes. So I guess, that's what I envisioned seeing kinds of things addressed.
Well, I have a concern, and here's my concern, is that we've left, we now have a new 30-day public comment period, so that people can speak to a different document. Where is that different document? What are people responding to on this 30-day comment period?
Basically, pretty much.
My impression that all the comments were supposed to be in for tomorrow night.
Well.
Public comment on what?
The plan.
On the plan.
For this plan.
This document?
Yes.
I thought, I'm sorry, I thought I heard thirty-day, there's a new 30-day comment period that was established.
On the SMART code.
To allow for comment on the proposal to remove the residential and comment only on commercial industrial. That's what I thought I heard.
I believe the comments on the plan are due tomorrow night, and then they're, for the next 30 days, they're meeting to discuss changes to the proposed code.
SMART code.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And on page 27 is the section, I'm sorry, it was the number four, bullet number four, "Create civic space in the form of a Pinnardville common and intensify the development at the College Road intersection to help identify this area as the center of Pinnardville." Now, I, some of the ideas that this plan had are good, you know, we need a, a common area, there, there needs to be a, an identification of what the center of Pinnardville is. The streetscaping is good, but why are we intensifying the development in that section? If you look at the map, the code map, that is the urban section, it's actually coded under the character District Four or Five, I believe. It's the most dense development, with buildings situated right at the front property line, touching each other, no setbacks, side setbacks at all. You know, and I guess I, my question is why?
Didn't we create a civic center with the park at Abington?
It's a park, a mini-park, I think they called it.
That was one of those holes.
Yeah, it's an attempt.
Was to create that sense of space and focus.
Right. In the beginning, he said, the reason for that was because when the public commented, you know, in those, that five-day period, he heard a lot of references to that as a center, the community called it the center of Pinnardville. So that's what he was looking to, to develop it, it sounds like, on the page before he referenced that.
And if I may, I'm not opposed to that, but it's the degree of development. I think most residents would be happy if it was beautified, if it was made to look like a nice area, but not necessarily by increasing row houses.
Across, cross-out intensify, and would that sentence be acceptable?
But along with that, we have to look at the SMART code. I agree with Selectman DeVanzo, there are issues with our ordinances that need to be addressed for things like St. A's and some of the commercial. But in my opinion, those are best addressed through our ordinances that are existing, change them. I'm really not sure that we need to infuse this new SMART code layer that says how many, how much, what percentage of the frontage of your building has to be windows, and how high the, the window sill is, and, I mean, it really, I think, kind of pushes the envelope on allowing a property owner to do what they want to do with their property in the confines of zoning. Why do we want every building to look the same and be the same height and the same width and have the same amount of windows?
Row houses, which I have.
Do we have a planning committee or a zoning committee? Let them do the work, and why? They can do the work, they can, they can adopt the changes, make the changes, and do whatever needs to be done.
As an example, just on page 35, number three. "Improve the vehicular flow through Pinnardville by adjusting the traffic signal timing to allow vehicles to hit more green lights." That's a fabulous idea. Let's synchronize the lights on Mast Road.
Good work.
But it can be done. There's a cost to it, you can hire somebody to come in and do it. I don't need a new plan to tell us that that's what we need to improve traffic there.
Well, actually, the synchronization between the three lights in Pinnardville is a requirement at the planning board.
But I think that's a concrete thing that can be done relatively quickly to improve traffic flow on Mast Road. Good idea in the plan, but I don't know if we need a huge SMART code overlaid on our, our zoning to accomplish that. Very heavy on, this plan, very heavy on walkability, which I think is a good idea. I think we need to realize, though, that we're not in North Carolina, or, we live in New England, 113 days of the year, it rains. Six months out of the year, we have a thing called winter. We are never going to become a walking community. We want to have it so people can run to the store, but if you're talking live-work buildings, these are not high-wage jobs you're going to be creating. These are small convenience stores. I just don't think that's the vision that we want for the ultimate development of Pinnardville.
Although there's certainly merit in making it a walkable community to the greatest extent possible.
Absolutely.
Understandably.
But we need to recognize the limitations.
Yes.
Six months out of the year, you're not going, well, you can, but.
We have about five more minutes before we're going to, in fact, I'd like to break for just a couple of minutes before the second public comment, just to take a break and use it so there's, you need to. Are there other specifics that you want to point to right now, Nick, or other members of the board? I certainly hear the message.
They're sprinkled throughout. I don't need to keep going through each one of them.
And I agree, and I think that would be very, very time-consuming. I would rather send the message to them, let us see the revised document that removes all the reference to residential stock, and then let us spend some more specifically on that, because that time would be much better spent.
So that Mark understands, okay? When you say to remove the residential, okay, the only difficulty that we may have is you have residential properties that are but commercial properties. So if you say not to address the residential properties, I don't think we mean to eliminate every piece of property that's owned residential, because somehow it, it fits in the whole corridor.
Certainly, certainly need to consider the interaction between residential properties that are but commercial areas.
Exactly. And, and a perfect example, as you know, being on, many years on the planning board also, all right? You have the illuminated signs.
Yep.
Okay? Illuminated sign because. is a residential property, and there's not even a house over there on the corner, the house is over on the other portion of the lot, so you can't do that. But this other one that's over there has it, yeah, he can have it, because he abuts commercial properties.
But our focus would still be limited to the commercial industrial properties, but the effect that they have on abutting neighborhoods and such.
Right, 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 and, exactly.
If I could just make a, just a quick comment on the, we had a presentation last week from Dred.
Right.
And they talked about when commercial developers come into town, they drive into town, they look at, you know, what's the first thing they see? Take a look at the picture that Representative Heiko gave us, and just little things, you look at the sidewalks, and you look at the curbing, and the weeds are growing out, and, I mean, I know it's not cheap to take care of things like that, but just simple things like that make a community look inviting versus someone saying, is anybody taking care of this place? Is, you know, I mean, those are the.
That's just a private property.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm just saying that, but if you.
I understand, I just, I'm just.
Right, I understand, yes.
The reason why I'm saying that is, it's not our Public Works Department's fault that this is like this, I just want to.
What I'm saying is, using that just as an example, that those are the kind of things we can do as a community that doesn't require.
Anything.
Anything, other than the will to say, you know, let's just get out into the community and make sure it looks good.
Right. Yep, there's lots of those little things we can do. And the other thing they brought up was, you know, your main entries into town, coming up one fourteen, where you see a little tiny, little tiny green signs, as Goss.
Right, because I noticed, I noticed the welcome to Goss, you know, the Rotary signs, I noticed those, been driving around noticing those. I mean, what happens is, like, we know with, when we approve signs, you drive, after the sign's up, you drive by, you don't see it anymore. So when you start to say, I know the sign is there, but where is it exactly, and those are the things that I've been looking at.
Well, why don't we take a short five-minute recess, then we'll come back and we'll have our seven-twenty or so public comment period, okay?[733.94]
Okay, so, one copy for you, one copy for me, and again, twenty-one businesses, okay?
Understood.
That we visited, okay, and twenty of them signed, okay?
Understood.
And, um, so this, this is the plan, okay? So, so this plan is neither for residents nor the businesses. We all don't want this, okay? And the CD three with, with CD three, without CD three, it's not a fresh plan, it's the same plan. It's the same plan, okay? And the residents will get sucked up, alright? And there's been a lot of unethical things, okay, I-
We're not, we're not gonna go there, ma'am.
-unethical things, okay, on the board, alright? The board should have been representing us, fifty percent residents, fifty percent businesses. People from the rural part of Gothstown should not, should not be making decisions for us, okay? And I'm gonna present some other paperwork that has been very unethical, okay? A copy of the, um, uh, Board of Directors, okay, for the Gothstown Industrial Corp., okay? There, they have two members presently on the board, alright? Without mentioning any names, they have two members on the board, which is not good because they, they have, they might have two votes, that's not right, okay? And on this board, well, I'll mention, okay, it's public record, okay? Okay, this Gothstown Industrial Corp. has donated to this project, alright? They're pushing for the project, they want the project, they donated it, okay? And Mr. Anthony Martz, okay, who is steering the ad hoc committee, 'cause he's bossing everybody, he's telling everybody what to do, 'cause he's an attorney that deals in dealings like this, okay? He's part of this board, or part of this, um, company. And also, um, you know, no offense, but Mr. Davanza, you're not on the ad hoc committee, but you are on this over here, you're selectmen and you're on the planning board. And also, um, I believe it's, uh, Brian Rose's dad, who's an architect and a builder, okay? That's on this, then, on this board who's donated, okay? So there's a lot of unethical practices.
Well, that, that part's not true, just so you know.
Okay, well, that's your opinion.
No, that's not true, it's not a fact.
Okay, okay, well anyhow-
It's not Brian's father.
Yeah, it's not Brian's father.
Oh, it's not Brian, is it a relative, though, of Mr. Rose?
No, no, Brian's, Brian's from Arizona or somewhere.
Okay, I was told that, it, it was a relative, okay? Arthur Rose Senior is not, um, no, Brian's father, or not a relative, okay? Well, then I stand to be corrected, okay? Uh, I was told he was, so again, I, I apologize for that. But it doesn't look good, though, it really doesn't good. And Mr. Lawler is on here, too, and he's on the board, so, okay, we're gonna present that as possibly being unethical, okay? And we're also presenting, um, huh, let's see, what is this here? Okay, I, I just happen to be, you know, looking for houses, just in case I wanna move with all this, okay? Because this is upsetting, I've been here for thirty years, I've never complained to the town. And when I'm in jeopardy of losing my, my land, you know, it, it upsets me, and I will fight for my land, okay? And I'm looking for listings, alright, and all of a sudden I find one on twenty-one, um, Elm Street in Gothstown. And Brian Rose is not the owner, and I don't think he's looking to buy this property. It's, uh, listed with RE/MAX, uh, Mr., who is it? Um, Mr. Thomas Boishman, alright, it's a listing. And, and you're not supposed to be involved in sales if you don't have a real estate license? Uh, whether, you can, you can, of course, sell your own property, if you're the owner of the property, you can sell it. If you're looking for real estate, of course, you can be involved, but if you don't have a real estate li- license, you should not be on someone's listing. It says, "Amazing Village location with two point three-three acre lot, zone R1, loaded with all kinds of potential town water storage. Call Brian Rose at Town Hall to discuss your ideas," okay? So we have a broker here advertising, "Call our town planner." That's very unethical, alright? Um, this is against licensing, okay? I had, I had at one time, okay, a real estate license. I know some of the rules, and I looked it up. Brian does not have a real estate license, he should not be dealing with this, very unethical, alright? I'm presenting this to the board.
Whose website is that?
Okay, um, I emailed you with this information, okay? It's RE/MAX, okay? And also, um, okay, Mr., the gentleman that listed that is also the, the listing agent of that big parcel that's on the sale, on, on sale right now? It's on the corner of Mass Road and Plummer Road, okay? There's thirty-five acres there that I'm very nervous about, okay? Because, um, if this zoning goes through, you can put a lot of apartment buildings, a lot of low-income apartment buildings there, okay? And, um, this, Mr. Boishman is the listing agent there, too, or his office is, at least. So it's very, very upsetting. Um, these rules here, okay, this, without CD three, alright? Page two, compliance, the businesses have to comply with this, okay? Um, if they're grandfathered, okay, maybe for a couple of things, but some things are not gonna be grandfathered. And, um, if they do construction, they have to abide to all this. Page thirty-two, building form, private frontage, general. The private frontage within each character district shall conform. And that went for the, the residential district. So it says, "Private frontage," that's your private yard. Return to page thirty-three, it becomes common yard. So, yeah, as far as I know, I didn't buy a condo, well, all of a sudden, I have a common yard instead of a private yard, alright? And so does the businesses. And if you, if you look on, on page twenty-four, these, these setbacks are ridiculous. The businesses are gonna be right on the road, front setbacks, zero to twelve feet, maximum, twelve feet. Alright, so anyhow, so you, you approve a business, okay, they're gonna be right on the road, zero feet, alright? What, what if they wanna widen the road? What the heck, are you gonna bulldoze their house or their business? Okay, because they are, there are zero feet, okay, that doesn't make sense. Side setbacks, five feet, I'm five feet tall, so this is what you're gonna have between the buildings. That's a fire hazard, I'm sure Mr. Lemay will tell you that. How's he gonna get the fire engines in there, alright? The lot width, eighteen feet minimum to two hundred max, okay, two hundred max. Mass Road is upset because I sh- I'm sure they have wider than two hundred with their parking lot. They were on the map that you were taking part of their parking lot, alright? Cody's, okay, the gentleman, Cody's Diner, he's dying of cancer. He has stage four cancer, he's very, very sick, alright? They've owned the business for o- over forty years. You put him on a map, okay, showing you're taking his parking, you're taking his frontage, alright, and back on his property. They wanna retire, they wanna enjoy a few years. You put this on the internet, they're trying to sell their property, then, they, they, they lost sales because of this. You're a businessperson, you're gonna buy a diner, you're gonna look on the internet to see what's going on. Well, this is what they see, alright? So, signs, everybody has to conform to the same signs, okay? And as far as I remember, they can't even have a sign that says, "Call someone," alright? It has to match all this, so, it's not good. Cert- page thirty, page sixty-six, they have to plant all sorts of, um, shrubs and trees, alright? They have to look all the same. In, uh, page seventy-one, you're gonna put twelve units on an acre, okay? So that, an acre has about forty thousand square feet. You divide that by twelve, that's three thousand three hundred square feet. Right now, the businesses can, can operate on five thousand. So you're trying to put one and a half business on the existing spaces. And if my, if my lot, let's say, gets rezoned to commercial, a hundred by hundred, you could put three businesses on there, that's ridiculous. Three businesses on a single-family residence, alright? And my, my house, anybody's house, is in jeopardy, okay? Because we're, we see alleys in this, in this, um, map, page twenty-eight, okay? Rare alley, we see that. Well, where are you gonna get your rare alleys? They're gonna come from Mass Road onto the residential properties. You're gonna unblock our streets, which, we had a petition with over two hundred names, two hundred different names from all this. If we would've known that, we would've gotten one petition for the whole thing at once. We had to go back for more signatures, so we got two hundred signatures. This, this, uh, petition was, um, given in May, and the unblocking the streets was still on the map, okay, in June and July, and then it got off the map, it was proposed, but now it says possible. So we're not safe, we're not safe. And in here, there was wording, some kind, some kind of wording. You know, you're gonna eventually unblock the roads if this goes, and I don't like that. And if you unblock the roads, you can lodge in my, uh, my street, okay? On page sixty, it shows right-of-width, okay, forty feet. Right now, my street may be twenty-four feet, okay? So forty feet, so that would be, how many feet do you would need, okay? Um, well, let's say, some streets are twenty feet, let's just round them out for the easier, for figuring. So right-of-way's forty, let's say my street is twenty. So you need another twenty feet to, um, to, um, adhere to this, okay? And that's with parking only on one side. What if you decide to put parking on both sides, okay? So forty feet, and then you want parking on another side, that's seven feet there for parking on the other side, another seven feet for a walkway, so we're up to fifty-four feet, okay? That's how wide you want the street if you're gonna have parking on both sides. Right now, my street is about twenty-four, let's say. So that means you're gonna take thirty feet, okay, of, um, private property, thirty feet. Is it gonna be thirty feet from one side, if there's enough, or is it gonna be fifteen, fifteen? I don't know. But if you cut at least fifteen feet from my property, that's a lot, I don't have a front yard. And according to this, okay, my front yard won't be, I won't even have the crumbs, okay? It goes from private to common, alright? That means someone-
Can I ask you a question, please?
Yes.
Have you made these comments available to both the committee and the planning board? Knowing that there's a process that this has to go through, it has to go through the committee, be approved by the planning board, moved forward by the planning board?
Okay, what my, what I've been, what I've been asking you folks-
No, ma'am, my question was-
Okay, I'm sorry.
Have you made these comments available to both the com- the committee, the Panardville Committee, and the planning board?
I have talked to, on a lot of meetings, okay? I, um, when we first came, when I first started coming to this, um, selectmen meeting, okay? It was in May I came, and then we were supposed to have our first meeting, June eleventh, okay? Then it, the, the meeting was canceled, okay? We had notified two hundred people to come to a meeting, June eleventh, it was canceled, okay? There was no way of notifying everybody, so you had about two hundred people show up at St. Ansem's College for nothing, okay, which was very upsetting.
My question to you is-
Well, I'm telling you that I was trying to put the, the, you know, trying, I've talked, every meeting that I was able to go, I've talked, okay? And I've put, at all the concerns as they were coming up, I've talked, okay? And I've given you a whole bunch of papers, okay? The cost of educating a, a child was about eleven thousand. I gave you the story about Westchester County, there, they took this HUD money, okay? Now they have to build over ten thousand something. I've given information to wherever I've had a chance, okay? There's a lot of information.
Please, just a minute, my, my question is, you've obvi- you're actually reading some, some prepared comments.
Well, it's not prepared, I'm looking at this here.
My question was, have you provided these same comments to the committee and to the planning board? So that they'll have them in their records, so as they move forward-
It hasn't gone to the planning board yet, okay?
The planning board is the one who is overseeing this whole process.
Okay, but I've given my, well, com- the comments have been given to the ad hoc committee as they've been coming up. Last meeting, we were not able to speak, okay? So since this zoning has been in place, we have not been able to speak. We spoke on the pictures when we saw a whole bunch of apartment buildings in Shaw's parking lot in Hannaford, and we saw the parking, all the, all the, um, the houses there in back of the, um, Ice House where that thirty-five acres is. So that was, that was, we did, as the information's coming up, we've been speaking when we've had a chance to speak. Last meeting, we were not able to speak, okay? Tomorrow night, I plan to say as much as I can tomorrow night, okay? But it's hard because the list gets be- becoming bigger and bigger and bigger, you know?
The answer to my question is, yes, you have provided these comments to the, to the committee.
As much as possible, yes, yes, yes.
The code, you said the zoning in place, this zoning is not in place.
There's no zoning.
Well, it's proposed, it's on the table.
It's proposed, and the committee reviewed it for the first time at their last meeting. They have another meeting tomorrow night, and they, they're gonna be meeting the next thirty days to look over the code. So if you could type up all your concerns on the code for them?
I have given you emails, I have caught, how many emails, okay?
No, for the, for the ad hoc committee. 'Cause the committee has to do their work and go through the, that code book, and decide what they wanna keep and what they don't.
Well, at this point, we don't want any of it, okay? Who's gonna agree with me? Who wants, who doesn't want this plan at all, at all, at all?
Ma'am, ma'am, would you speak to the board, please, ma'am?
Well, I just wanna see-
We understand why they're here, would you just please address this this way?
All these people, they don't want plan with CD three, or plan with CD, without CD three. Your businesses do not want this, we don't want it, we want this dissolved. You have the power, you put it on the books, we want you to take it off the books, please.
May I speak, please?
Yes.
So, it, I understand you say you, you don't want any of this, and that's not-
It's not only me.
And the people who are sitting behind you are of the same mindset.
Correct, correct, and in addition to the-
We can certainly enter that into the record, and that's sufficient, that's all we need to know. You don't support any of it.
Okay.
And you'd like it to, they think, the plan to be abandoned in its entirety.
Correct.
Am I hearing you correctly?
Correct, yes, correct.
Is that what I'm gonna hear from the people sitting behind you as well?
You want this plan to go away.
Just so far, so if you're, if you're in agreement, you don't all have to come up, one at a time.
We want-
If their names are on the petition, and the petition says that we're, it's our wishes to abandon the plan completely.
Okay, it says-
And that's sufficient, we will have that in the record.
It says, "I wanna say no to Plan Panardville," that means the same thing, doesn't it?
Perfect, that's perfect.
Maybe our wording is not as you're saying it, but it's pretty much the same.
That's the message, thank you.
We're saying no to apartment buildings and complexes, no government affiliated housing.
Wait a minute, you're saying no to the plan in its entirety. We don't need to go into the details, if, if your position is no to the entire plan, that's sufficient.
Right, right, but we don't want it to be called anything else?
That's all we need to know.
We don't want the plan to be called anything else?
Understood.
We don't wanna be fooled or tricked, okay? We don't want this, okay? And we don't want it to be revisited for another eight years, if possible.
Understood, and that's sufficient, your statement is, you and the people who have signed the petition, if I, if I'm capturing it correctly, all are of the same agreement that they want the plan scrapped in its entirety.
Correct, correct, we want this in writing, from you, notarized, okay? And I will keep it, that, that this, we want this in writing, okay? That the plan is, if you decide, if you have the power to stop this plan, which I think you do, 'cause you, you signed for this plan, okay, it was approved by you, okay, originally. The plan, you put the plan on the table, you can put the plan off the table. We want it, okay, as soon as possible, something in writing saying that you're not gonna revisit a plan as such, okay? No matter how you call it, we don't want a plan like this, at all, okay? We do not want a plan like this. We want this in writing to be guaranteed, so we can sleep at night. And we wanna say that this, this such a zoning is not gonna be revisited for eight years. We don't wanna be fooled with any names, any, you know, however you call it, we just don't want this, alright? And, okay, if we, we, maybe we, we need some changes, okay, on Mass Road. But, okay, we wanna be part of the process. We want it to be fifty percent residents, fifty percent businesses, okay? And I am willing to represent some of the residents. We have intelligent people here, we have, I know a builder here that lives, and we have people that have really nice houses, and that are gonna be affected by all this, okay? And I, I, another thing that was very upsetting, alright? I went, um, to Juchus's sign today, okay? The business is closed, alright, it's closed. There's a big for sale sign, and why are they, from what I understand, why are they closed? 'Cause you did not approve what they wanted to do. They wanted to, they wanted to revamp the building, it was gonna be a beautiful, nice building. You denied them, you denied them.
I didn't deny them anything, ma'am, I'll speak clear for the record. This board did not deny them anything.
Okay, alright, well, um, well, at one time, I'm not sure when they asked, okay? But you were on the planning board one time, alright? You were on the planning board, 'cause your names are in the minutes of Moose Club, okay, so-
You're talking about this board, this is the board of selectmen.
Okay, okay, but we have individuals that double, in, in double board, and you know, they, they also, they work on this board and they also work in planning, and you did work in planning at one time, alright? And your name is over Moose Club. So I'm not sure who denied these people, okay, I'm not sure. But as far as I understood today, that they tried to get a nice building built there, and they were denied by planning. It's so sad, you know? Now, they took their business and they're in Bedford. And I have pictures, okay, of what you approved, or someone approved, the planning board. They approved our transformer, um, a lot of public service stuff, it's an eyesore, it's an eyesore. You gave up, you sacrificed the business for an eyesore thing, okay? You cut all the trees down, okay, and, and it, it's terrible, it's terrible, I have pictures of this.
And I'm gonna stop you, okay, 'cause you're bringing up planning issues, okay? This is the board of selectmen, the board of selectmen didn't approve or deny any of those issues. Those are actions that were taken by the planning board. Those are issues, that if you wanna visit those, are properly brought before the planning board for their consideration. That's not under the purview of the board of selectmen.
Well, the, the board of selectmen is involved in this planning issue here, okay? So anyhow, I wanted to, to bring that out.
We're involved to the extent that we, as a board, agreed to accept the grant. And we agreed to comply with the terms and conditions of the grant, including the deliverables, okay? We have a legal obligation to meet those requirements. We, we, we have to meet those requirements. Now, all, we understand that there's great angst now and great concern amongst the community, we've heard you loud and clear. I think the committee's heard you loud and clear, based upon a rather significant shift in the way the plan is gonna look from this point forward. Now, you may still have problems with it, but at least we've taken that step forward, so it's not like nobody's listening to you and the folks behind you. We absolutely are listening to you, we've heard you loud and clear.
We want you to give back the money, give back the money if you have to.
We have, we have certain legal obligations we have to meet. It's easy to say that, however, we need to make sure it's something that, first of all, that's legally defensible and something that we can do.
Okay, well, we've been asking for this since May. What are the requirements, what do you have to do?
But it doesn't change the legal requirements. You may ask for it all you want, but if there are legal requirements and commitments that need to be honored, we have to honor those commitments. You had asked us to look at that, and we are still looking at that, and looking for a legal opinion as to what we can do and what we can't do.
But you folks got us into this mess, you have to be able to get us out. It doesn't, doesn't make sense, you put it on the table, you can take it off, okay? We do not want this to go to planning, we don't want this to go to March, okay?
We understand that.
You're gonna have, you're gonna make me have a nervous breakdown if this continues, okay? And then you will get sued for that, too, because this is very stressful. When I see a map, okay, that my property gets taken away, alright, is very upsetting. Where I have, I just have a little hundred by hundred lot, alright? And the new requirements are gonna be fifty by a hundred. So if you're eating my, my land up, okay, with sidewalks and common yards, and you're eating my, my yard up with rare, okay, my rare yard for alleys-
Let me stop you right there on that one specific issue. I think you also are aware of the fact that the other significant changes, there will be no takings by eminent domain whatsoever in any part of this program.
It shows in the books, though, it shows in the books.
It's gonna be changed, it's going to be revised, I haven't had a chance to revise it yet. They're still meeting on it, they're still taking it under consideration, they still got a thirty-day comment period. The, the message has been received loud and clear by the committee, by this board, and we're moving forward.
And I believe you got a copy of what was presented last week, and it says right on there.
There will be no eminent takings by eminent domain, none, period, zero, for whatever purpose. Not for sidewalks, not for your, your rear yards, side yards, streets, whatever. Increasing right-of-ways, none of that.
Well, I'd just like to dispute that. There was an article in, um, Thursday's Union Leader, okay, or was it Gothstown News? Okay, it was in Gothstown News, I'm sorry, Gothstown News, Thursday, okay? Brian Rose was cited, or however you wanna say it. They were interviewing Brian Rose, and it says that, okay, the, the owners don't have to do anything they don't want to do. That's what he was saying, okay, with this plan, okay? And also, he was saying, "I don't think the town can take your land." "I don't think," okay, that's not a guarantee, it's "I don't think." And I could, I should've brought in the, the copy, okay? And he says that for something to happen, like eminent domain, they would have to, they would have to, like, say, build two thousand, um, two thousand houses, two thousand houses, put in water storage. This possibly could happen. I recall, I read this, okay? So eminent domain could happen, okay, if we build two thousand houses. And it's not gonna take long to but build two thousand units when they're built in Shaw's parking lot? Okay, and you have thirty-five acres on Plummer Road, alright?
I read the article also, what Brian Rose said was, for an example, not that this would ever happen here, and those are his exact words, here's a possible scenario, but that's not expected to happen here. He's trying to give an example of when taking by eminent domain may be proper. But again, I'll go back to the fact that the, the committee's been very clear, and Brian Rose has been very clear, there will be no takings by eminent domain.
We want that in writing.
There's a-
Notarizing in writing.
It's coming in, it's coming in writing, it's coming in writing.
No taking of front yards, no taking of rear yards, no unblocking our streets.
Ma'am, ma'am, it's a simple issue, we've said it, there will be no taking by eminent domain. You don't need to spew all of these examples out, we've got the message.
But they're in the books, so in the pictures.
There will be no taking by eminent domain, eminent domain, okay? But that issue's been resolved.
But they're in the pictures, they're in the, this is our master pro- this is our master plan, and it's gonna be-
It's going to be revised, it's going to be revised to reflect the actions that have been taken. Those haven't been reflected yet in this document. This document needs to be amended to take into account those, and we, and you heard our discussion here. We want a document back before us that takes out of this plan all of the references to residential impacts, residential properties. You're here, I believe, when you heard us discussing this, just shortly before the public comment.
Well, how about the businesses, we mean, we don't want, we don't wanna create hardship on the businesses either.
What we've asked for is a clean plan that reflects the current version, and how it's been pared down, so that we can see it, because otherwise we speculate. We need to see it in writing, we need to see the actions and the changes that have occurred as a result of the actions. And that's appropriate, and when we get them, we'll have an opportunity then to comment intelligently, because we'll have something in front of us to look at, 'cause up to now, it's speculation.
Well, another thing, too, this, this HUD grant, okay? If you read it, it's online, okay, I'm sure you've, you've started looking at it. It mentions smart codes. So in order to get this HUD grant, you're into it now, you have to adhere, you have to go to smart code.
No, 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 let me correct you there.
No, you don't.
No, 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 our obligation under the grant is to complete the process and come out with a report, that's it. We're not required to implement it, we're not required to do anything with it, if we don't want to. Very nice, thank you very much, we'll put it on the shelf.
So when can you do-
No obligation.
So when can you do this? Does it have to go to planning?
It has to go to planning, and then, and-
That completes the process.
And then it would have to go before the voters. It has to be approved by the voters in Gothstown, that's the ultimate final step.
Okay, if it, if, can it get killed? Can it get killed at planning?
Yeah, absolutely, it can.
Okay, so if I bring all my friends back, okay, at planning?
To planning.
Okay, so everybody has to come back, September twelfth, okay? Everybody has to come back, and even though they're busy, they're gone away, they're, you know, kids in school, so they have to come back, or is this proper notification that we don't want this?
If you, if you have a spokesperson like yourself that brings signatures with a statement, with a statement, that'll go on record, they don't all have to show up, if they've signed a petition, they, they are on record. They don't have to show up, if they're on vacation, their name will still be recorded as, you know, these are their wishes. Um, that would be acceptable.
But why does it have to go to planning? Can you just end it now? We're going through the process, okay? It's bad, we don't want it, we want you to end it now, we want the stress ended, you know? Day in and day out, this is what I'm thinking about, you're making me sick, you really are, okay? You're making a lot of people sick. We have people that have pools, we have people that have little kids that play in the yards. We don't want to lose that, okay?
We've already, we've already gone there, okay?
But it's outrageous, it's outrageous, it's outrageous.
We don't need to revisit it, we're just, there's not gonna be any takings by eminent domains. We're not gonna take swimming pools and backyards and playgrounds, it's not gonna happen.
But it's in the map.
It, it's in the old map.
Okay, well, no, the CD three-
It's in the old plan.
CD three-
It's in the old plan, it's gonna be revised, okay?
So anyhow, so you're gonna make us go through to planning, okay? Alright, this is-
Well, I, I, I would, absolutely, and if it's, if it's that important issue, I would think you'd wanna go to planning. I would think you'd wanna be heard before every body that will listen to you and has, has some sort of jurisdiction over you. Certainly, certainly, planning is, it's a planning effort.
It doesn't seem like you folks are working for us at all. You're supposed to be representing us, you're supposed to voice out our opinions, okay? That's why I'm saying, you put this on the table, I know you can take it off, okay? And that's what we're asking you, you have powers, you're like mayors, okay? You have powers to do this. And I've emailed you with all the unethical things, okay? What you can, cannot do, there's a list, it goes on and on, do you want me to reread everything?
Let me clarify, allegedly unethical, in your opinion unethical, okay? Let's, let's just be clear.
Okay, we can ask the people in DACME if they think this is unethical, okay? All of them will say, alright, will say, "From what you've read and what you've seen, is this unethical? Raise your hand, raise your hand."
Ma'am, 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 okay, the board's conducting the hearing, okay?
Okay, alright.
You'll address your comments to the board, I'll ask if they wanna come, if they have an opportunity, okay?
Okay.
But this, we're running this meeting, okay?
Okay, alright.
Let's make sure you understand that.
Alright.
Now, we've heard loud and clear that you want the plan scrapped completely. You've got a s- a whole series of signatures on petitions to support that same position. Perfect, beautiful, it's clear, clear as a bell to us, and we'll put that into the record.
Okay, alright, but we, we have to drag this on, though, September twelfth.
Do you have any other new issues other than that? Do you have any other new issues other than that? Because otherwise, I'm gonna ask for, for the folks.
All right, well, thank you very much for listening to me. Again, I don't mean to give anybody a hard time. I just think this is outrageous. It's stressful, and I don't know what else I can say, you know? I can list and list and list and list the things.
There's nobody who believes in the public process more than the group sitting at this table, okay? And that's all we're trying to do, is make sure that we follow the process, because otherwise, we can get in a whole lot of hot water.
Well, you're already in the hot water by COVID, so to deal with...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Folks, anyone else like to come up, and please, come on up, sir, and give us some fresh ideas?
Uh, John Paradise, no E at the end, Forty Cove Street, Goffstown.
Welcome.
Uh, let's fast forward with all of this. I just want an explanation. I don't understand certain things. Let's talk about the HUD grant. Is that what you call it? The HUD grant. Say it gets, it gets approved. How much authority does HUD have on placing all these apartments? And, I mean, do, do they have the last say, or does Goffstown have the last say if it's? I mean, who has the last say here?
HUD does not have the last say on this, okay? HUD, the grant is only to prepare a document, make recommendations through a report, which is what we're waiting for. It's being revised and amended and actually cut down and pared down. And you want it pared all the way down? That's fine. That's, you're entitled to that opinion. So that's the process we're working through. Our only commitment under the grant is to complete the process and end up with a final documentation. We're not required to implement it. We're not required to fund it. We're not required to, we're not even required to do anything. We could, we could use it to start a fire in our wood stove.
Well, I was, I was just curious, you know, because in my mind, I'm thinking about all of, if it, say, everything goes, and, and they're gonna involve more housing wherever, wherever. By having more housing, uh, and, and the way, what I'm going to is my tax base. If you have more housing, that means you need, you need more fire department. If you have more fire department, that means you're gonna need more police department, because you have more people around. And, and, and along with, you know, the ambulances and everything else that comes with being a Goffstown resident. But then again, along with all of that, comes all, an increase in all, in my taxes. And I'm sure that really bothers a lot of people at this point in their, in their life.
You're, you're right, and you'll, you may have heard of reference to studies called cost of community service studies. And what they do is they look at any particular development, whether it's commercial, industrial, or residential, and they look at the cost of the community services that they needed to provide that development versus the tax dollars they generate. And in general, commercial and industrial developments are cost of services positive. They generate more tax dollars than services they provide. The opposite is true with residential development. Residential development costs more in community services than it generates in tax dollars. That's in general. I mean, there have been many, many dozens and dozens of studies throughout the country to show that that's the fact, so, I mean, that's clearly understood that, you know? No question, when you start throwing residential development into town, you're sucking money from the town. It's the commercial, and that's why this board has its number one goal to promote commercial industrial development in town. And that's why I think you're hearing the committee moving, taking the residential out, say, "Let's focus on the commercial and industrial to pump up those tax dollars, take the burden off the residential taxpayer."
When you say, uh, you know, as a board, but as, as representatives of the taxpayers, uh, when you promote, uh, commercial, you promote commercial anywheres within the town of Goffstown?
Well, within, within the zoning ordinances, I mean, we have zoning ordinances that have been voted on by the, by the citizens and the voters and taxpayers.
Oh, zoning ordinances, that can be changed, uh, at any given time by that board.
Well, by vote of the people. By vote of the people. It's gotta go to county meetings. It's gotta get on the ballot. Yep, yeah, nobody has the authority to just change zoning ordinances. Can't happen.
If, um, God, I hate being old.
Hang on a minute. It's all right. We're all getting there.
It's not for sissies, is it?
You understand, Al, right?
I think we all do, John.
I have another question I wanted to ask, and I, I can't think of it now. Well, I, oh, in looking around, is there, is there, uh, I guess you have to educate me a little. In dealing with towns, do they look for, you know, you've got people living in housing that pay X amount of dollars, and of course, you want to have so much business to help balance all of that? So we're looking at percentages, percentages of, of this, commercial, percentages of residential. Is there a, a thing out there for, that we look at?
Oh, there sure is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, what that balance ought to be.
And I don't want to run for the board, though.
Yeah, there is, there is, and I can tell you right now, Goffstown is woefully out of balance compared to the communities surrounding us.
Our commercial development is only like ten percent, and our residential is ninety percent.
So that's what's killing us?
If that much, yeah.
Let alone, let alone the, the schooling part, the education part.
Right.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ideally, John, ideally, a community would have about thirty percent commercial industrial.
That's, yeah, that's...
Ideally, and we have ten, about ten percent, but that includes utilities. And if you just look at commercial industrial land, we're probably around seven percent.
It's woefully inadequate.
That's why we're trying, you know, we're trying to work on, on changing that.
Well, yeah, I am no different than anybody else. I mean, I, I know that, uh, there's been a lot of talk with, you know, traffic lights, roundabouts. We don't want it because there's, uh, historical buildings here, and, you know, your traffic. I know traffic on Mass Road and also, well, that's Mass Road out here. Both Mass Roads, let's put it that way. I know traffic is tremendous, and we have no different direction to go around any of us. And that becomes a real issue, uh, and you just can't buy somebody's backyard and say, "We're gonna put a, a goal, an alternate route here."
Now you're talking eminent domain.
Now you're charging a lot of money. And then, when you do that, all the businesses that are on Mass Road that you divert the traffic from, they all...
Screaming, yelling.
You're, you're killing our business, so...
So you can't win.
Catch twenty-two.
Yeah, especially on the amount of traffic, I, yeah.
Yeah, we're at a choke point. There's no question for all the communities to our west. They all come through town. There's nothing we can do about it.
Well, it's just, you know, sometimes it does get frustrating. I understand, you know, what everybody's trying to say and we're trying to do, and I'm no different than they are. I don't want to see, uh, waste of tax money, uh, waste of everything that's going on. I, we're growing. I understand that. It's hard.
You make no mistake about it, this board shares your frustration as well. It's very frustrating, but it's the issues that we have to grapple with, so we're trying to do the best we can. Thank you for your comments.
I'm sure I'll be lis, I listen to you on television. You do a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Thanks. Yes, folks, yes, Representative Burt. Recognize the representative, since you have your official badge on and everything. Welcome.
Well, Mr. Chairman, hi.
Wish the lever would drop.
I'm in the big kid chair. I am Representative John Burt, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, fine committee members. You spoke of, um, you know, briefly, you said that, you know, if everybody shares your, their, you know, the same feelings as the first speaker, uh, you know, that, you know, their name is sufficient. Well, I somewhat disagree with that. I think every one of us needs to get up here and say no to this, uh, because as the fine selectman right here, Mr. Brown said, "Bring people. Have them talk." And again, uh, in the planning, you know, you could kill this before it goes to the planning board. I know you can. Uh, I wish you would, uh, because we're gonna tie the planning board up for probably a couple of days with public comment, uh, from what I'm hearing with the amount of people that are gonna go to this, uh, because that's, you know, where we can kill it. Uh, this needs to be killed, and, um, you know, as you said last week in the selectmen's, uh, meeting, Mr. Chairman, uh, you know, that business is your top priority. Well, Goffstown is just so anti-business, and, I mean, you know, there was a couple of board members when I said that at a meeting one time, they said, "Oh, what do you mean?" I said, "Look at the poor Cumberland Farms, what they had to jump through." I mean, you know, just, you're Dunkin' Donuts. I mean, you know, let business run their own. You know, and here we are, "Well, you know, if you put this bush here and the light here," and... I mean, who are we to say, you know, where the business is more important and they have more knowledge of what's gonna sell, you know, but we have to micromanage everything? You know, look at the cranes down in Bedford. Go on every street corner, there's a damn crane building a business down there. I mean, they're booming. That could be us, but, you know, like Joseph Sines, they left, a lot of businesses left, and they're not coming back. You know, I'd love to see an IMAX where Shaw's is, but what's the chances of that? I don't know, you know? We're not very open in. Again, I'd love to see this killed, uh, because, uh, you know, for us to get into bed with the government, and that's what this is, is, uh, you know, we're gonna jump in bed with them and roll around, and, and who's gonna get hurt? It's gonna be us. Uh, and I'm gonna bring it up one more time, and I know you don't want me to rehash, and I'll be very brief, is the seventeen thousand dollar fine for, um, testing our waters that Carol got us into. You know, that could be seventeen thousand dollar fine. The reason we're in that predicament is because we got in bed with the federal government. At one time, I pray, the federal government was good, but I'll tell you right now, it's evil. It is bad. Everything they touch is just bad. You know, and this is an example, to tell a small town that if we don't do exactly what they say in testing our water, we're gonna get fined seventeen thousand dollars. It just disgusts me. Uh, I want to get to the Heikal amendment. Bottom line, the Heikal amendment, the way I read it, will not do anything. And the reason is, is in the grant. If I'm reading it right, and I have a group of people that are helping me understand this, because we want to put as much positive, you know, correct information out there as possible, we do, uh, we don't own, or we don't have intellectual properties rights. HUD does. HUD owns the plan. Whatever we adopt, HUD will own it at the end. That is in the grant. That's what's specified in the grant. Also, HUD can alter the plan, and this is in the grant, HUD can alter the plan due to change in conditions. Well, does that mean it's sunny one day and they're okay, and the, the cloud comes over? That's a change? You know, there's nothing written what the change is. That's up to the federal government. Again, that... Also, in the grant, is HUD will have the final say. Again, if we say we want thirty-four housing units somewheres, and HUD says, "No, you're getting a thousand." "Jesus, we don't want a thousand. Sorry, that's what you're getting." Because they own the rights to this. That's what we're signing on to. So when you guys do, will not kill this, which you can, but for you allowing this to go through, I want you to think about that seventeen thousand dollar possible fine per day that we could be facing. If we jump in bed with these people, we're gonna have ten times, that seventeen thousand dollar fine will be a walk in the park. Also, with the Heikal amendment, you know, why it won't work, and, and I like John, so don't get me wrong, but the reason it won't work is because of, of the previous reasons I explained. So we come back, eminent domain. That's how they're gonna pull this off. You can put it in a paper that we're not. You can notarize it, give it to Ms. Benner. You can give it to all of us, but bottom line, until you change the grant that says, and I don't want you to even do that, I just want you to kill the damn thing, you know, that they own everything. They own it. And I just can't make it clear enough to you guys. I guess that's it, and I, I just wanna, you know, once again, stress, please, do the right thing for the taxpayers of Penardville. And we're gonna start reaching out to Goffstown residents. If you want this to go through the planning board, we can't stop you. But I'm telling you right now, we'll kill this thing in March. It ain't gonna pass, so let's save everybody the headaches, and let's just kill it now. Because we're gonna gear up, and we're gonna do it. We're gonna kill it. I mean, look at the steam that's coming forward with all these people and all the signatures. You know, why waste the time? Let's worry about business. Let's kill this, and we can do every, everything we want. And you said that we can't change zoning. You're absolutely right. We can't change any zoning rules. But there's called, a little thing called variances. We can change those without the voters' permission. We can say, "Okay, if you want this, well, all right, yep, just, here you are. You can have that." You know, we can do everything without the federal government. We need to eliminate them out of our lives, the less they are with us. And look at the education. It's a disaster. Government runs it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative Burt. Can I, um, can I, excuse me? Representative, can I just make a couple of comments?
Yes.
In response to what you said, I just want to clarify this whole issue about public comment, okay? I, I didn't say that we, I wouldn't take public comment if we had...
That's correct.
I have the same mindset. The question was, what if people were out of town? Do they have to come back to comment? And my response was, no. If they sign the petition, we'll, we'll accept that as their sentiment and their feeling and their wishes. I will entertain all public comment, and we'll stay here as long as we have to to listen to those who want to be heard. That's the way that we run the business. I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, well, I thought I heard just a little bit where if we're all in agreeance, you know, we don't need to come a hall.
The question was, what about all of these people who may not be available, may not be able to come to all of these future hearings? And what I said was, if their name is on a petition, and those are their wishes, it will carry the same full force and effect as if they had showed up personally to testify. That, that was my purpose there. And the other thing I wanted to clarify, you mentioned a seventeen thousand dollar day fine. That's a fine that's, that the EPA is considering imposing relative to what's called MS four, which is discharge of pollutants to surface waters. That's a whole separate issue. It has nothing to do with planning. It has to do with how we manage our stormwater, uh, and we did not volunteer to enter into agreement with, with, with the federal government. The EPA dictated to the town of Goffstown that you will comply with these environmental standards, and the town, and Carl, taking the lead, has objected very forcefully with EPA, and EPA has backed off and is now backing up and taking a second look at the whole thing. So I just wanted to clarify that.
But why are we in that position where other towns are not?
Because we're a certain, we're a certain population, and we're in a certain geographical location, and EPA dictates that.
I'm being told that it's, uh, we accepted some grant...
No, 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 that's not correct.
They, 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 they took the map.
No, I get, I get this. They dictated to us. They dictate, they identify what they call MS four communities. It's based upon population and your loc, and your proximity to, um, population centers.
So Bedford falls under the same thing?
Yep.
Where Woodsville, New Hampshire won?
Correct.
And in fact, not all of Goffstown does. It's only the urbanized areas, because we're next to Manchester. It has to do with the, the density and the, the urban nature of your stormwater.
And again, it's being dictated by EPA to us, so...
Called government.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm just saying, we didn't enter into that agreement with them. That's, that's not an accurate statement.
Well, but it, it's government.
Well, and what I'm, but what I'm saying is, we're fighting that. We're saying, get out of, get out...
And you want to jump in bed with these on this?
That's why we wrote him and said, "You know what? We think this is over, overbearing and unreasonable to impose these restrictions on communities like Goffstown." So, you know, we've made our position, but that, that's, that's kind of a separate issue from this, but appreciate...
But with this plan in Penardville, we don't even need to be there.
Gotcha, yeah, yeah, I got you on that one.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Someone else might be here. Yes, sir, right in the front, and then we'll get to that. Sorry.
Um, Jim Sparks, fifty-eight Avenue Street. First of all, everything you've heard so far, ditto, so I won't put you through all that again. What I'd like to say, I'd like to pick up on something you said about you want business here in town. Um, I'm a businessman. I've been a businessman for forty years. I've started four different technology companies. And one of the things I always looked at was the town I was gonna locate the business in. And to be perfectly honest with you, with what I've heard here tonight, or with any town that was looking at anything connected with the federal government, their EQULE program, which, you know, you can complain that this isn't part of that. You can also tell me it has nothing to do with Agenda twenty-one. We all know it's all feed down from that by the federal government. I wouldn't even consider locating a business in a town that was going through this. So you have the opportunity right now, if somebody has the courage, to make a motion to kill this thing. And if you guys would do that, you know, then, you know, it would change my position as a businessman. And, you know, I think like any businessman thinks, no one's getting into this mess. So why make it go to next March? Because no legitimate business is gonna walk in in the middle of this when they don't know what they're gonna get. You know, it's just like we're going through, you know, all these companies around the country looking at, until I know what this healthcare act is gonna do, I'm not, you know, adding any more employees. I'm not relocating my businesses. Well, you're doing the same thing in this town, in this level, when you're dealing with HUD grants and you're dealing with the indecision and the unknown for a business. They don't know what to expect. They don't know what to, they could walk in here, make a deal with the planning committee, and start building a, a, a small factory or, you know, a distribution center, employ a couple hundred people, and all of a sudden, HUD comes in and changes things. You know, it starts dictating to them, this is what you have to do, this is what the building has to look like. Maybe that won't work for their business, you know? So you're just setting you up for, you know, six or nine months of, you know, businesses not looking at Goffstown to relocate the business. I think that's something you should be concerned about if you're truly interested in expanding the business space.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your perspective from a businessman's point of view. That's helpful.
What, your motion to kill this thing?
We, we've got to take everything into consideration. We've got, still got more people who want to be heard. And we, and again, and again, I want to let people know that we still have to confer with our legal counsel, because the last thing we want to do is set up a situation where we're being sued, or there's gonna have ramifications to all of us that we don't want to have occur. So we've heard it. We're looking for guidance in that regard, to our benefit, obviously. So, but thank you very much. Someone in the back. I'm gonna go to the back. I think there's somebody way in the back. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Justin Gamache. I work for Gamache Properties. Uh, we own the, um, plaza that's, uh, that abuts Bartlett Street School there, right across from, uh, that intersection, um, that, you know, you guys were talking about on College Street. You know, sitting down, listening to the whole thing, I'll tell you, uh, you guys definitely do a very good job, or have been doing a very good job, kinda going... uh, you guys definitely do a very good job, or have been doing a very good job, kinda going through it all, you know, putting the information together. I mean, I just recently started, uh, really, uh, divulging into the whole project and what you as an entire group has done. And, I mean, I, I must say, it is impressive. And, uh, you know, it, it, it definitely is, uh, quite the undertaking, you know? Um, of course, you know, looking at it, there, there were some concerns. Uh, in between a few of the comments I did hear, you know, I, I pretty much gathered those answers, uh, during that time. But, uh, so mainly the only other real concern I would have would be, um, leasing the, uh, the spaces in the plaza and if it would create any additional constraints. I mean, what, what I've gathered would be, in effect, actually lighten up some of the constraints to make it easier for businesses to lease. But, you know, I just wanted to state my concern to make sure that any vacant space that we do have, depending on what business would, uh, come in there, you know, the, um, you know, working with the town and making sure that, you know, they're compliant with everything, you know, that this particular plan wouldn't interfere in that, you know? And obviously, I mean, I know there was, uh, some other, like, in the, in the photos that, which are more of like an idea, you know, and which I've gathered. Um, but, you know, you guys wanted to make a community center in that area. So I didn't know if some of those businesses, if it would make it more difficult for any of those other businesses to can, can exist, or, you know, or any other, uh, basically, I mean, you know, wanting to address that issue and bring that up, and that's about it.
I appreciate that, that's not the intent.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Our intent is to try and stimulate commercial investor development at appropriate level, at appropriate scale, in appropriate locations, given the other constraints with zoning and relationships to neighborhoods and all the rest that goes into the mix that has to be, you know, considered. I appreciate your comments about leasing, we hadn't heard that before. But I appreciate you bringing that forward as, as a concern, that's something new to us. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, this is the first time I've ever been to one of these meetings, so, you'll have to bear with me.
That's all right.
My name's Norm Lavalley.
Welcome.
Uh, forty-two Plummer Street. Uh, I've lived in Penardville, I know some of the members of this board. I've lived in Penardville for about twenty-five years. My grandfather lived in Penardville before me for about fifty years. Um, I'm gonna call this plan exactly what it is, which is called Put It in Penardville. Every time there's something that comes up, let's put it in Penardville. Let's put it in Penardville. We want another shopping mall, put it in Penardville. You, we're looking at, has anybody done any kind of impact study on, on what this is gonna cause to water, sewer, how, uh, to, to the school system? Has anybody done anything like that? I mean, you got these grandiose plans, but we, it's gonna cost us thousands of dollars to live in Penardville. It's gonna cost us thousands of dollars to live in Goffstown. I mean, let's get serious. Um, in, as far as the low-income housing, why in Penardville? We got plenty of room on thirteen, we got plenty of room on one fourteen, Tibbetts Hill, Terrell Hill. Is there a problem with that? But no, let's put it in Penardville. I feel claustrophobic living in Penardville as it is. I mean, yeah, I bought the house, yeah, I knew I was gonna have neighbors abutting me. But I feel claustrophobic as it is. But yet, we're gonna, I live at the corner of, uh, Plummer Street and Mast Road. The lady that lives next to me is about eighty-eight years old, going on a hundred. All right, she's gonna die soon. That, that, that section of, of Mast Road is gonna be zone commercial, guaranteed. I'm gonna be living either on Mast Road, which I never wanted to do in the first place, or I'm gonna be abutting, uh, a business that God knows what's gonna be there. But let's put it in Penardville. Has anybody here, I mean, I live on a dead-end street, all right, and I like living on a dead-end street. And God knows that, you know, even living on a dead-end street, we get people that fly up the street doing thirty-five miles an hour. Why? The street's not even a mile long. What's that big of a deal at the end of the street, I don't know. But if we put all these streets through, I mean, my kids are older now, so I don't have to worry about that, but there's plenty of people on the street that have little kids. There's gonna be people flying through those streets. They're not gonna care. There's gonna be, there's, there's gonna be little kids that are gonna get hurt. All right, so I, I'm asking you folks to take a good look at this and decide not to do it, please. All right, you're all parents here, you, you all have people you care about. We do in Penardville too, okay? And I don't want this put through because I'm afraid of what it's gonna do to our community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Someone else might be heard, please. Did I think I saw, did I see another hand in the back somewhere, no? Anybody wanna be heard? Plenty of opportunity. No? Going once? Going twice? Anybody at all? If number one speaks for a second now? Yes, you may, sure, come on forward. Well, we need your name for the record, though.
Susan Lavalley.
Thank you. Okay.
Um, you approved the grant, did you approve, did you guys already get the money from HUD?
It's spent, yes.
Yes.
You already have.
Yes.
So does that mean you are already committed to building all those low-income units?
No, no, wait a minute, let's, let's go back again. The grant was only to develop a concept. There's no commitment to build anything, there's no commitment to change any zoning, there's no commitment to change anything. It's merely, it was merely a study to look at opportunities for, and I'll say it now, to, to make improvements to the community. And I hear you saying, this isn't gonna do that, and I got that message, and I think we all got that message. But that was the con, initial concept, that's the way it was coming forward. And, and as I said before, we don't have to do anything with this. There is no obligation by the town of Goffstown to, to build out whatever comes out of this. So I just wanna be clear about that. So there is no further commitment beyond the study itself.
Have you guys had anybody sit down and say, hey, yeah, we want it? Have you had that, had anybody come, anybody's been, said we want it?
Not that I can recall. That'd be an honest with you, not that I can recall.
It's the federal government's money, so.
Well, and it is a process, and we're trying to follow the process. And we, and again, this is part of, this is part of the process. Okay, and this is valuable to us. We've already had changes, you've heard, already heard some fairly significant changes. But again, that doesn't commit us to anything. Um, in the back, please.
My name is, uh, Greg Carson. I am actually the director of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, I'm the field office director here in New Hampshire.
Oh, welcome.
And, and I just want to clarify one, one thing, I'm gonna go, I was invited to go to the meeting tomorrow night, now I will answer all kinds of questions for the folks tomorrow night. But I just want to clarify one thing. The town did not get a grant from HUD. The town got a grant from the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority.
That's correct.
And so, um, as far as HUD's concerned, there is no contractual relationship between the town and, uh, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. You have whatever relationship you agree to with New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, but you're not a grantee of HUD.
You're absolutely right.
And I hear often people say the HUD could contract, et cetera, or the grant. Anything that's in the grant between HUD and New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority does not apply to the town. So there, there's a lot of misinformation. HUD, we don't really care one way or the other, what you do with your plan or how you do it, as long as, you know, you, you know, people spend the money without wasting it, you know, that they actually go through some planning process. It's wonderful, actually, to hear all the feedback, good or bad, that people are actually sitting down, actually talking about, you know, doing planning, because that's, I think, important, so you don't have ad hoc. I was chairman of my zoning board in my town. Uh, I'm from Salem, uh, I live in Leonardary, was there forever, I was a state representative, like I said, chairman of the zoning boards, so, so, I'm very attuned to, you know, that, these kind of issues in town. And so it's just great to hear the feedback one way or the other, but, uh, like I said, I just wanna make sure that people are not attributing, you know, some onerous requirements. I mean HUD legally, I'm an attorney, um, uh, like I said, HUD cannot come in here and tell the town of Goffstown to build low-income housing or anything else like that. The Constitution just doesn't work that way, but, so I just wanted to clarify that. And like I said, I will be available tomorrow to the, you know, the, the planning committee and, you know, to anybody who has, uh, questions and that. I'll bring out, you know, all the materials with me, so.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Have any burning questions, I can answer them briefly now, but.
Any members aboard, I don't have any burning questions, I mean, you're absolutely.
Stick around for a few minutes, we might, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I, I just wanted to come in here tonight so that, you know, I'd be better prepared.
You're absolutely right, and I appreciate you making that distinction, because you're absolutely right. Now, whether or not that means anything to people, you know, which agency this is.
No, no, I understand, I just, like, I, I'm gonna tell everybody what the facts are, whether they like them or not. I mean, I, I don't, you know, facts are facts, opinions are opinions, so.
You've been there, you know what we're dealing with.
I, I've done this a lot, so.
Thank you very much.
Could we take a question, I think Mrs. Lavalley has a question.
Yeah, Wyndham? Yes.
So what you just said about HUD has really nothing to do with this? But you were saying we have to go through the process for HUD?
I just wanna make.
Can't we just kill this off the table if that has nothing to do with it?
Because, let me just explain, New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, which is the state agency that does, you know, housing, HUD gave, the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority a million-dollar grant, along with three point seven million dollars, went to the planning commissions that are around the state. We gave them both grants so that they could work with cities and towns to create plans. They, in turn, offered grants, and apparently Goffstown applied for a grant with New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. So anything that's going on, you know, any, any kind of contractual issues, spent the money, didn't spend the money, wanna give the money back, whatever, that is dealt specifically with the town and with New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, not with HUD. So I just, there is a world of difference between the two.
But to be clear, the, the money from, for New Hampshire Housing Finance comes from HUD, so if you follow the grant, it comes back.
We gave the money to New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. Like I said, Goffstown's not a grantee, and so therefore, you, you can't break my heart by, you know, doing one way or the other. You may have some issues with New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, the state agency, if I could.
Yes.
Just, just to be clear, though, in our applicant, in our grant agreement with New Hampshire Housing, there are sections that say that we are, um, that we do have to comply with all obligations or requirements under HUD. Um, so there are, I just don't want anyone to think there's no connection at all.
Um, but, but the connection is, but, New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority can't contract for the federal government.
Understood.
They quoted that, and they, you know, they, you know, that's, you know, what they wanted to do. But the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development cannot enforce a third-party contract, is that, is that, is really between the two of you, so.
Understood.
Did you have a question?
Can I ask you, I just want a quick question for you, Carlos. What, what kind of contractual agreement are we actually, I mean, if we wanted to make a motion to kill this, I mean, I'm just asking you, do, are we?
I will leave with that.
No, wait a minute, we've already spoken of that, we're waiting to get some guidance. Isn't that correct, Sue? Are we waiting to get some guidance as to whether or not?
What I'm hearing is that we're actually not bound by anything, and I'm just wondering why we can't.
We're bound by an agreement with New Hampshire Housing.
We're bound, yes, to give back the money. Perhaps, I mean.
The, the, the grant talks about ways that you can break the agreement, I forget what page it's on, Nick.
I haven't been able to find that. I know, uh, New Hampshire Housing Authority has a right to terminate the agreement and hold us.
Right, they do.
Right, but there's three, I think there were three different scenarios where, if, in other words, they could terminate it if we failed to produce any of the deliverables that we agreed to produce.
Let's not give them any paperwork, we all set.
But anyway, I wanna.
I think if you looked at the workflow, a proposed ordinance must be submitted.
Right, that's what I was looking for, because I think we do have to ultimately, under this agreement, have to bring something to a, a town meeting.
Well, I'm not sure if it's town meeting, it wasn't that specific.
No, 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 only to the planning board.
Right.
And it doesn't give you any specifics as what has to go to the planning board.
Yeah, and I don't think you find it in the grant agreement, Nick, I think the grant agreement makes, makes reference to another document, but you have to go to that document to find out.
Well, it's in Exhibit A, where it talks about deliverables. Says, review and finalize code for adoption. Then coordinate and facilitate public hearings to be held prior to adoption of any smart code regulatory change. Promote any proposed zoning amendments on the project webpage. And then participate at public hearings to be held prior to adoption of any smart call regu, smart growth regulatory change in accordance with applicable land use statutes. As a deliverable.
Yeah, no, no, I'm going back to the, I'm referring back to the original grant agreement.
That's what this is.
Yeah, those are the specifics, I'm talking about the general provisions of the grant. But we, we can, we can find that, I wanna make sure we take comment. Somebody else wanna? John, can I just make sure everybody has a chance to talk first, I'd be happy to come back to you. Anybody who wants to speak, who hasn't had an opportunity to speak once first? Okay, certainly, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Representative John Burt, again. Uh, Bay Street. Uh, with the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, I mean, but, you know, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands in, in that grant, HUD is written everywheres. Uh, I mean, you know, and who controls New Hampshire Housing and Finance Authority? I imagine it's HUD, but I don't know the answer to that. Uh, but, you, you know, it's still that section of the government. And what do they do? They bring housing. And, and so we don't want that. So I would love to see, uh, the fine, uh, selectmen make a motion to kill this thing and, uh, see where your votes lie. Uh, because bottom line, you know, we don't want the housing money. We can do everything on our own. So let's focus on business only, which we can do without this grant, and let's just get rid of it.
Thank you. I'm gonna give you the opportunity to have a closing comment, is that what you would like?
Well, just a quick question.
Well, no, is that what you would like, okay? Because I don't wanna be bouncing back and forth. Okay, there are others who wanna be heard, I'm gonna allow final comment here, but is that acceptable? Okay, sure, come on up.
My name is Gaby Better, again, twelve Joffrey Street. And I'm just a little confused, the gentleman that just spoke, um, is he from Southern New Hampshire or New Hampshire Housing?
I'm not from either, I'm the field officer, director for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. I'm the director for the federal government. Those are state agencies along with New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. No authority over it.
I was hoping you would have authority, I was gonna ask you to kill it for us today. I was hoping, I was saying, if these folks don't wanna kill it, you know?
So comments to the board for closing.
Again, we're asking you, please, okay? The HUD agreement's in there, okay? Nick is looking at all the information, all right? And as far as he can see, you have the rights to kill it. Take a vote tonight, end it, so you don't have to keep seeing us week after week after week. The end, amen, that's what I'm saying, thank you.
All right, everyone wishing to be heard, having been heard, I'm going to close the public comment session. Thank you all very much for attending, it's very useful to us. Uh, we appreciate your comments, we'll take them under consideration. Follow along. Thank you very much.
It's like a, it's like a.
Right?
Oh, you're welcome to say, it's an open meeting.
Or are you gonna be, are you gonna be, are you gonna be discussing this again? Um, but we can't talk, can we stay and we can look?
We can stay and listen. I'm not sure, but I can tell you right now, I'm not sure that we're gonna take this up any further than we have already tonight. We still, I still have serious reservations as to what our options are, and I know that there were three.
Okay, John.
Good night.
See you, John, take care.
Thank you.
There are three different scenarios under which we could break this grant. Yes, having ramifications, of course. And we need to consider those very closely. Not the least of which, not the least of which is, um,
How much has already been spent?
How much has already been spent? What an effect it'll have on, on our ability to obtain future grants, because it will affect that. Um, and other issues that may, other unintended consequences that may have. And I just wanna make sure we consider it carefully before we jump to any conclusions.
We have paid out forty thousand of the fifty, and we have an invoice for, I think, nine thousand.
For essentially spent.
Yeah.
Don't worry, they only, they didn't get it all.
So it's spent, so it's a matter now of trying to get it back, not just.
Do we have to get it back? Do we just let it, do it, take its cost, take its cost, let the planning board kill it? And then, once they've done that?
We could.
We don't have to give back the money, we've done our, we've done what we had to do.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes.
I think that's what we need to determine. If the scope of work binds us to.
Preparing a document for.
No, to go to vote with an ordinance change, a smart code. I, I would agree that maybe it might be better to just.
I do not believe that's the case.
But I'm saying, that's what we need, that's what we need to determine.
I'm fairly certain of that, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm fairly certain.
I discussed it with New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, grantor, today. And they understand that we have an elected planning board and it's their right to decide what goes or doesn't go on the ballot. So, there is no requirement to go on the ballot.
There is not.
No.
Would they give us that in writing?
I can attempt to get that in writing from him, but he, I explained our type of, our public government.
Yeah.
And explained to him, that's an elected board, they decide what goes or doesn't go on the ballot. They have their public hearings and then they decide. And I said, so I, we would never have entered into an agreement that us as a, you as a governing body could say.
Have a final say over zoning.
Exactly. It's not within your jurisdiction, that's the planning board's jurisdiction to decide what goes on the, for zoning articles on the ballot.
And we have no control over the planning.
Correct. Two separate bodies.
My, my evaluation of it is, I think our safest position is to let the process finish and then just say, "Thank you, no thank you."
I mean, you can make a recommendation to the planning board if you don't like the final product.
Well, and that's what I was gonna suggest, I think, as I mentioned earlier, I think we need to make constructive comments on the plan.
Exactly.
What it is that we feel does not fit in what our direction originally wanted. And then if they continue with the process through our representative on the planning board, we need to very strongly state our position and our opposition to it.
But I want to make comments on the current plan, and this is not the current plan.
That is the current.
Well, it's, it's, there's gonna be a different plan that comes out, as we understand.
Based on comments, that's, but my point is based on comments, so we, I think we want our comments included.
He's saying, based on the committee's actions.
Actions to come to date.
They're changing the scope of the plan, so.
So, this needs to be revised to reflect that change.
That's, that's.
Remember, Nick, you're gathering all the information.
I under, yes.
And I think, I think Mark goes to the committee meeting tomorrow.
I do.
And states that the board has reviewed the plan, they have great concerns over anything related to housing, but let's not confuse the plan with the code. The code is open for 30 days, public comment ends tomorrow on the plan.
Correct, and that was, that's where I was going with this.
Okay.
Last week, they made the amendment. Tomorrow night, they're going to discuss that amendment and the plan, and any public comment. My position was, I think, as having a representative on that committee, we need to provide him with comments.
And direction.
And direction, so that tomorrow, when they're making those changes, they know our position.
So, let's provide him with that direction.
Can I, can I, can I say one thing? To Mark, one, and, again, I have not been there, I purposely not been there because I wanted to be objective when this comes to me as a member of the planning board. But what I've gathered through here is some of the terminology that's used in it to describe things doesn't seem to have the same terminology or concept that we use in our zoning. What I'll get to is references to common land and frontage, common frontage, things along that line. Some of those things seem to be appearance-based. In other words, what you see from the street when you look at a property, what they call a common area is not what we consider to be common, owned by the town, okay? So, I think that causes a difficulty in the concept, because you read it as common, our perception of common means like the town come, you know, that's owned in common or what's a condominium. And there's also seemed to be a blur between what was the definitions for townhouses or They, they seem to, the wording just did not seem to be easily to understand what it applied to. So, I think that was even difficult for me to fully conceive, and I don't, I don't know if there's been a discussion or anybody else's had that, that.
As far as, I don't follow. They provide a definition for it.
Well, well, that's, well, I see, I don't have all of those, but what I'm saying is, when I first read something and I see, you know, like, the co, the common frontage or something, you know, a term, and I'm just using that as a term, now, what they mean by that is what is seen from the, from, from a person, a passerby.
Right.
But it doesn't mean that it's owned in common by people. So, those things cause difficulties.
So, and I. What direction do we want to give to Mark to bring to the meeting tomorrow night as our representative?
I think he ought to be all negative, myself, at least.
What does that mean?
I mean, the whole plan seems to me should be, if we can't vote this down tonight or vote, make a motion, vote it out, then you should take that to these people and say, "Look, you guys need to decide to throw this out the window, sink it somewhere, let it run its process, because we're gonna end up paying the money back if we don't let it run its process."
They're paid money.
Right, we've, we've spent the money.
Yeah.
We don't have to pay it back if we let it run the process.
Right, right.
But I think they should know that we're gonna let the process run right to the bottom, have a nice day, and thank you very much, we don't want it. I think that's our, really our best choice. I'd like to make a motion, but we can't, I understand that. And, and I'd like the people to know that we can't do that, but if we let it run its course.
I don't think there's anything stopping us making a motion, Alan.
Well, me.
I don't think there's anything stopping us.
We've wasted money on worse things, I can tell you that, so, why don't we make, I mean, I would make a motion to kill this thing right now if you guys think you would entertain that.
What does that mean, kill it?
Drop this whole project.
So, you're talking about disbanding the committee?
Disband the whole thing, I think it's a waste of time, waste of people's money, and waste of a lot of, and, don't get me wrong, a lot of people have done a lot of good things, but I think it's been an awful lot of wasted motion.
And I, my, my position is, I want to know what the ramifications of that are.
Right, I think we have to pay back the.
I want to know what we're gonna be exposed to.
$50,000, pay back the grant.
Paying back the grantor.
That's what I'm getting, I don't want to make that motion, I'm gonna give that money back. If, you know.
Well, we've already spent the money.
I know we have.
I would rather, I would rather. I would rather say that this board is in strong disagreement of what's been proposed. Let's follow the process through and let the process.
Just die.
Die.
Yeah, cut the vine.
That would be our safest way.
Yeah.
I, I know we have mixed emotions on this board, and lesson learned by all, let it be what it is. I will bring the motion, I will bring the, the opinion of this board tomorrow night to the, to the group and say, "We're under strong, you know, criticism of, of the plan, we feel that we're, we're, our audience that this plan should take its path and let it just fall by the wayside and that's it."
Cut the vine, just let it die right there. You know, I mean, it'll, it'll die in, in process, it'll die with.
And that way there, hopefully, we won't lose all our money.
Well, we won't lose any, I don't think, I mean, you know.
We've already spent it.
Doesn't matter.
So, we won't, we won't have to pay it back, Bill.
We just let it make its process.
Oh, no, no, I'm saying, but if, if, if you, if you try to kill this now.
No, I, I understand, that's what I'm saying, I don't want to ma, I would make that motion, but I understand what will be the ramifications will be.
That's, that's what's confusing people, and I don't want, I don't want.
No, I got my initial comment, I think our safest position is to let it play itself out. And at the end of the day, say, "Thank you, but no thank you." It's a very nice thought.
When you go to that meeting, I think you should make that very well-known, that all of us members aboard here, that's where we want it to go.
Because that.
So, it will essentially give all those people.
That way we fulfill our obligations under the grant, we don't expose ourselves to anything, and the process has played itself out. The public has commented, we've heard the public, and that's how we, how we stop it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just a couple of observations. First, some questions. If the ad hoc committee sends this plan to the planning board, how does the board of selectmen stop it?
Well, that's a good question.
We have no jurisdiction over the planning board.
There will be public hearings.
No, I'm not, I'm not going there, I'm saying, how does the board stop it?
That would be where, where Carlos said, we let it take its path, it would have to go all the way to the day of voting, and when we vote on it that day.
We recommend against it.
We recommend against it.
We recommend against it.
And then, and then after that, the people.
If it goes, when it goes to ballot.
We recommend it five-zero.
If it goes to the ballot, I don't believe selectmen can put a recommendation on a zoning article.
No, but we can write letters to the editor, we can put in articles, we can make our position known.
But wait a minute, you have one vote on the planning board, which is me.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? There are several things that I see that the board could do with the plan. Okay, whatever plan comes forward, the planning board could accept the plan from the committee, thank the committee for the, all their work, and just accept the plan.
And not take it, not make it part of the master plan, we're just accepting the plan. It's the ordinance piece, the code.
But that's gonna be up to the committee. Now, can the committee modify the code?
Sure.
So, the committee could work to modify the code where it's basically got no teeth.
Or just address the code that they want to foster economic development.
Well, that's what I mean.
And, and that's where I said earlier, I think the planning board can do that through existing zoning ordinances. Look at the trouble area and you make changes to your existing zoning ordinances to address commercial development, all of those things. I don't think adding another layer of smart code, if you will.
Would do any benefit for it.
Is gonna have any benefit.
No benefit at all. I think we're all saying the same thing, but in two different ways.
Yeah, they may find pieces, either the committee or the planning board may find pieces in here that they would like to change our current zoning.
That we use, but we just adopt it on our own.
Right.
As, as opposed to through the, through the plan and the code.
Yeah.
Right.
And just another observation, I, I don't think, and this is going to selectmen demands' comment earlier, this is not a, a site plan review, so I don't think you have to preserve a, an objective. In other words, the board could give you, we could discuss a direction, and you can go to a planning board meeting with a decision in mind, because you're not held, this isn't a site plan review that you're held to that quasi-judiciary position like is, where you can't make up your mind before a hearing, because this isn't a site plan review. This is zoning, this is just.
Be right, because they're not in quite, but, but what I've been trying to do is not to go there biased, but now, I mean, things have changed.
Right.
It's a different story, because now, now, as a selectman's rep, I go there and if the discussion that we have, I bring that discussion with me. I mean, I understand, I mean, I have a concern, I don't want to be going to a planning board meeting to have a discussion and vote on something with a predetermined decision. But I mean, if I have the general consensus, you know, the general, the idea, the board's concerns, I bring those concerns with me and wait till see what the finished product is, because we don't have a finished product, and do the best that I can to have an objective view with all the concerns of the planning board, have that discussion, and then vote according to, to those.
I, I would be comfortable with something in writing from New Hampshire Housing that basically says, "We are not held to any requirements other than getting a plan to the planning board." Because if there are other strings attached and we have to put in some type of smart code, I would agree with Selectman Brown, I'd just as soon say, you know, "We spent $50,000, we have a nice plan, we won't get reimbursed for it, but."
We spent it the worst ways we have.
But I, I don't want a commitment that we have to start increasing the housing density in Pinnardville to, to fulfill any requirements.
But, can I, let me just ask, if the committee changes the plan and eliminates the housing, the housing's not in it.
And we still got a lot of the drags coming over with it.
Agreed, I, I would have to see what those changes are and.
Exactly.
Right, oh, yeah, no, no.
You just want to make sure the process ends, as far as the grant was concerned, the process ends when the code's been presented to the planning board.
That's it.
What code? Right, and there, and there's no ramifications.
The ordinance change, whatever the code, the recommendations.
The recommendations that come out of it.
Is completed by just.
I don't want to see any recommendations go that way.
Are we required to have a code?
Yes, you have to bring some code.
We're required by this board, by this grant, or we just require?
Well, that's what, that was.
If that's the case, then I think we kill it.
But it's Carlos.
No, not to town meeting, not to town meeting, to the planning board.
Right, the point that I'm trying to make, though, is if Mark is our representative on there, and if Mark works to make changes to this, to this code, all right, the final product, there is no requirement of a minimum or anything in that, it just says a code. That code could be two things.
Could be, the code could be comply with our existing zoning ordinances.
That's my point.
Exactly.
That's my point. So, if Mark works to that end.
How do we ensure that?
Well, we have Mark.
Yeah. But we don't have, we have no, no jurisdiction over the planning board, so if we can't.
No, 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 we don't have jurisdiction, but we have one vote, yeah, I'm on the board, representing the board.
But you're one vote.
We can deliver the message loud and clear.
Well, hopefully. I think if Mark delivers a message tomorrow night, "Look, guys, they want to kill this, and you do the same."
No, well, it's not.
Well, I'm not killing, I'm not saying kill it.
Let, let the, let the plan take its path, let, let's see.
Look at.
Well, you gotta be careful letting the plan take its path, because it could go in a direction you don't want to go in still.
But, 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 no, 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 as Carlos said, we don't have to act on anything, when it's done, we don't have to act on a thing.
No, you're right, but you also have to give it that direction and make sure it does go, and hopefully that will pass on tomorrow night, so. I, I would hope they become in full forces tomorrow night, the meeting again, and, and show up, so.
But, but there's two things, tomorrow is the finalization of the plan.
The plan.
And then there's another 30 days on the smart code.
Correct.
So, the smart code is the thing to work on, to modify that code, okay, so it has no teeth in it.
Right. Because if you're gonna remove the housing piece out of the plan.
You don't need any.
Then all the housing part to do in the code comes out too.
Comes out, yeah, right.
Right. I mean, there's, there's things that could be in the smart code, for example, okay? To look at, the, the gentleman that was here from the, from the mall that talked about the, about the leasing.
The gentleman that was here from the, from the mall that talked about the, about the leasing.
Leasing, yes.
In the back of that parking lot, there's a lot, there's a lot of spaces. There are some businesses that come in that may have a verbal agreement. We used to, planning board used to require written agreements.
And shared parking.
Shared parking. So if the smart code says to try to address shared parking between the businesses.
Excellent. No problem.
Why can't we do that in our current ordinance?
We do.
We can, but have the smart code, that's the smart code that was presented to the planning board. There's a smart code that's been presented to the planning board.
Takes the teeth out of it.
To, to work at, at shared parking between businesses.
And I know, I mean, I know because I've been privy to some discussion and debate in that plaza over there. Everybody on the second floor is supposed to park out back.
Exactly.
The second floor is the outback parking. First floor residents have the first floor in the front. And I think it's three spots per person. And that doesn't even apply at times, only because of the way things go.
And if I can add, that smart code can even suggest to the planning board to accept verbal agreements. Our zoning requires, or the planning board has always required, has required written agreements. Or it could be a recommendation to accept verbal agreements. It's part of a, it's part of a code.
So.
I could.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not to put Mark on the spot, could you?
Oh, that's fine.
I know. I'm going to though. If you could verbalize what, what your, what our concerns are. That you're gonna relay to the committee tomorrow.
Basically, I wanna make sure that we have all parts of the housing code that's, that's listed in here, removed, removed and taken out of the.
Smart code.
The smart.
Well, the plan, because we're really not talking about the code yet.
Okay.
Just the plan.
And basically, one of the concerns or, or issues that we have, we believe terminology has caused considerable issues with this plan. And that, that's a major problem. And then the obligation to the grant, do we let the grant take its path? Or do we stop it in its path? I mean, that's the only thing I've taken for notes so far, unless you want anything else to go on that.
Well, I would think that anything in this plan that does not, that is not addressed by this Mass Road corridor.
Yeah.
From the Manchester line to Route 114 and the west side of Daniel Plummer Corridor from Mass Road to the Bedford line, approximately a hundred and fifty feet from the center of the road, should not even be addressed in this plan.
So the plan needs to match the amendment, basically.
Right.
Right?
Is that on, is that on the?
Page twenty.
So they need to go through the whole plan and match the amendment.
But that's on part of, that's on number two right here.
Correct. Page twenty, number two.
Well, on the page, it's on the other, oh.
And the plan should not be referencing residential properties unless it's to talk about their relationship to the commercial properties. Because that's important. And that's already covered in our zoning ordinances anyways. So we're, we're not going anywhere new.
No. No, as a matter of fact, R S B O D is a buffer between residential and commercial.
We've already, yeah, done a lot of work to set up that.
Exactly. And I'll read that verbatimly, word for word, Nick.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I would think that the plan should not be encouraging any increased density over what is currently allowed.
Right.
I mean, we, we would expect that the plan would be actually encouraging commercial.
That's our intent, is commercial development.
Just to make sure that if you don't state, if you, if you say that, well, that's the intent. If you don't state it, sometimes it's.
And another way to put it very simply is that the plan should reflect our current zoning ordinance. To the great, I mean, that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Leave it alone.
Leave it alone.
But you can write the plan, as long as the plan reflects the ordinances.
Yeah, but the whole grant application was to come up with the ordinance or.
We just did. We're not gonna change it.
Well, as far as the smart code goes, I'm talking about the plan. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, if it comes to a point you guys are gonna vote on this next Monday, call me, I'll call in.
Okay.
I absolutely will, because I, I just.
You gonna be here next Monday?
No, but it's very important if, to me, if I'll, I'll make a call or another.
That's right, that's the one we, yeah, we do.
It's just the three of us. Are you, are you?
I'm not here either.
But I will certainly call in if it comes to a point, so let me just, let me know what's gonna happen.
Wait a minute.
We ain't doing.
No, I'm not comfortable with just three members of the board.
No, I'll call in. I'll call in, I'll be here.
I'll wait for a full board. I'll wait for a full board to sit right here.
We need a full board.
Full board to sit right here.
Well, that's for now.
Alan, nothing, nothing's gonna happen tomorrow night.
Yeah, for two weeks, you know.
Well, there's no reason why I can't. That's what I'm trying to say. We are the governing body and we, we, we should be able to change things as we go along.
But it's too important. I want, I want your face at the table.
Yeah, I'll be here, don't worry.
I want Phil there as well.
Yeah. No question about it. I mean, if it comes to that point, I, I'm, you know, you can, I can take where I stand on it.
Anything else you want me to bring forward?
I think if you just, you know, put that to it just as strong as you can, I think that's.
Everything we just discussed, I have it right here.
So the grant agreement is between.
Us and New Hampshire Housing Finance.
When you say us, the board of selectmen, the town?
The town.
Not the planning board.
Right.
So if at some point in the process.
We wanna kill it.
We want to terminate that agreement, we can do that. It's not dependent on the planning board.
Now, there's one other thing, though. There's one other thing that's in there.
But just, just before you go there, I asked Sue to send that around electronically to the grant. There was, not only the grant, but you have, but there was a companion document that references. And that's where it talks about options for terminating.
Well, that's, that's where I was gonna go. There's one thing in there because New Hampshire Housing Finance can terminate it. All right, now, what I had thought about in that, what is it that would make them terminate it?
Failure to produce.
Failure to produce, okay? But I don't see anything in there that says that there will be a fine or anything. I did not see any place in there.
I tried to find that.
So there, there, failure to produce. I mean, if a plan never goes forward to the planning board, does that constitute that?
Is this the complaint, companion? Is that the one you're referring to?
Tom, sorry?
Is this the one? Terms and, the terms and conditions?
Yep, I think it is.
Cooperative agreement provisions is along the table.
Apparently in there.
Compliance, conduct of work, default and disputes.
Default and disputes.
But then again, we run into the problem, if you did that, you'd never get granted.
Well, I wouldn't see that.
Granted, he's in default if any one of the following occurs. Any use of the grant agreement funds for a purpose other than is authorized. Any material noncompliance with federal, state, local laws, regulations is determined by HUD. Any other material breach of this award agreement. Any misrepresentation in the application and failure to meet any reporting requirements.
See, I don't like that line with HUD in the middle of it.
HUD may take the following additional corrective and remedial actions. They may reduce the award and the amount affected by the default, take action against the recipient under twenty-four CFR Part twenty-four, which I don't know what that is, with respect to future HUD or federal grant awards.
Demand repayment?
Initiate litigation or other legal proceedings designed to require compliance.
Which we don't want to get into.
Just let it, just, just.
Temporarily withhold his payments. With all for the payments, take any other remedial action.
See, I mean, those are all nasty.
Number four is the initiate, so they could.
Yeah.
Initiate litigation and force us to comply with the terms of this agreement.